I'm going to gavel us in and call us to order and ask that you please stand as I call for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and the State of Texas flag.
Please join me, please. Lord Heavenly Father, we're here today to give you thanks. We're always asking for something for you, but today we're giving you thanks for everything we have. Thank you for your blessings. Thank you for this Commissioners' Court. Help us to make the right decisions as we have the hearings today. Bless those that are here and bless those that are not here that are sick. Keep them under your wings. Lord God, thank you for everything you've given, the wisdom, the knowledge to this Commissioners' Court to do the right thing for the right reasons. Again, Lord, we ask you, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state, under God, one indivisible. Thank you so much. And Timothy, if you'd come forward and give us our safety briefing for ourselves and for the audience.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, Judge, ma'am. Today we're meeting on the third floor of the Nuñez County Courthouse located at 901 Leopard Street. Restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium as you exit the Commissioners' Court past the Information Technology Office. A fire extinguisher is located at the rear of the courtroom. In addition, there are five fire extinguishers located throughout the third-floor atrium area immediately outside the courtroom. An AED is also located on the right wall as you exit the courtroom between the Human Resources and Information Technology Offices. Participants today responsible for dialing 911 will be Tyner and Edward. Participants who are CPR-qualified are Deputy Vazquez. In case of evacuation, egress route will be down the atrium stairs immediately outside the courtroom. Proceed out the double doors located on the left-hand side of the courthouse and muster across the street in the parking lot. In case the need is shelter in place, will remain in the building and await further instructions from the Nuñez County Sheriff's Office. Our shared safety topics for today are heat-related illnesses, care, and prevention. That concludes my safety briefing.
Thank you so much. And I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I skipped the roll and noting that today is Thursday, July 24th, 2019. We started approximately at 9:04 a.m. Of course, we're here at the third floor of the county courthouse, 901 Leopard, and I do certify that we have a quorum present, and Commissioner Chesney is absent today. At this time, I'm going to call for the adoption of the following. We have some wonderful resolutions and proclamations, and if it's all right, I'm going to take us out of order because we have the Honorable State Representative Todd Hunter here with us, and I'd like to recognize him at this time as we present certificates of distinction to Judge Missy Madera, the 347th District Court Judge Ina Klein of the 214th District Court. This is really a very proud moment for us, all of us here at the Nuñez County Courthouse, and I will yield to the good gentleman in black.
Well, thank you, Madam Judge. I thought it would be appropriate that I dress like a judge today.
Good God!
But if I could call Judge Missy Madera and Judge Ina Klein up here. And I want to say one thing, I want to thank you, Judge, very much, because this is the most appropriate setting, is our county, to present to our two district judges this award and really celebration. And I want to thank you personally for involving and making sure Judge Jag and John and Carolyn join in. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. It's a very special distinction.
What we're doing is we're presenting two flags, and we've had them framed, everyone. We're flown over the Capitol. We put them in glass, judges, so if you drop them, we don't have to burn them and get you another one. But what we've done is noted that this is in honor of you receiving the designation of the Center of Judicial Excellence by the Texas Judicial Council. And as Judge Canales knows, and I know, this is a great thing for Corpus Christi, Texas and the Coastal Bend. And what folks need to know, this is designation for Texas here. And so, rather than making a bunch of speeches on behalf of the State of Texas in conjunction with Nuñez County, I want to thank you both for being stellar, stellar folks in the judicial field, getting this honor, getting this designation, and this is just a small token of our appreciation. And this is the Lone Star Flag. This was presented, and it is flown over the Capitol. So Judge Madera, I'm going to let you have this first one. Judge Klein, the second, and then congratulations to all of you.
He's right.
I just want to say something. State Representative Hunter, thank you so much for the honor. This is really cool. But thank you very much. It is our honor to bring this home to Nuñez County, being the first two courts in the State of Texas that were recognized as Centers of Excellence is just, you know, and something that's a dream come true for each of us. We could not have done this without our team, Andrew Garcia, who is my court coordinator, Gabby Fuentes, I mean Gabby Dennis, sorry, and Merrily Roberts. We could not have done this without them, and so this award really goes to all of us. Thank you very much, Judge Klein.
I don't think I could add much more. Thank you to Representative Hunter. Thank you to the Commissioners for allowing us to have this moment. I think we're both super excited to bring it home and to have this positive note for Nuñez County. Thank you. Have a good one.
And I'd like to invite the Commissioners to come down for a photo. And I also want to say that Michael Robinson and I have had the opportunity to go downstairs and actually find a very fitting location for the plaque, and we've decided that it will be right below where it says, well, right at the entrance of where we have our jurors meet, our potential jurors meet. So in the jury, right as you enter the jury room, on the left-hand side, every Monday, as you know, thousands of citizens come through, and I want everybody to enter those doors as a potential juror and know they're entering in a possible court that has been designated a Center of Excellence. So, we're excited about that. Thank you, Judge. Thank you. Merrily? Andy? Coming in, scooting in.
Can everybody see me? This is Judge Madera. One, two, three. One, two, three. Anybody else?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much. Thank you. Very special. Now, bringing us back into order under E1, we're going to have Tyner, when he gets back in, he'll start the resolution in support of multi-systemic therapy for the Nuñez County Juvenile Probation Department.
And Judge, I know at least Homer's here. He may want to come stand with me.
That would be great. There he is. Court recognizes Homer Flotis.
I'll begin, Judge. Whereas research indicates that youth involved in the juvenile justice system that are provided treatment in the community have more successful outcomes than those placed outside the home. Whereas the involvement of caregivers in treating youth involved in the juvenile justice system is essential in obtaining lasting effects. Whereas specific risk factors have been identified that increase the likelihood that a youth will offend or reoffend, including poor school performance, negative peer association, drug use, and family conflict. Whereas multi-systemic therapy is an evidence-based treatment addressing the multi-determinant risk factors of delinquent behavior in the homes, schools, and community with youth and family. Whereas MST services have been provided in Nuñez County since 2008 with positive results for the youth and families in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Nuñez County Commissioners' Court, does hereby support the MST program in providing research-driven, community-based services to the youth involved with the Nuñez County Juvenile Probation Department.
May I have a second? And at this time, I'll call for discussion and ask Homer to make some comments.
Thank you, Judge. On behalf of the Juvenile Board, I want to thank the Commissioners' Court and the Judge for your support. This is a tool that we use in the probation department and our probation officers that really deals with the changing behavior with kids. It has nothing to do with institutions or locking kids up. It's a community-based program, and that's where the real work is done, that's where the hard work is done. So I do appreciate your support for this.
Thank you so much, Homer, and I can't give enough credit to you and to your staff for changing kids' lives and saving them, and that's our goal, and multi-systemic therapy has proven its worth in data, and I think that if we could, the resources really should be, you know, directed to this very, very worthwhile program. So, we're very happy to provide support. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Pose same sign. Thank you so much.
Homer, you know, when you save one, you're saving a lot of people, saving a lot of families if you do one. So, keep on pushing.
At this time, Tyner, would you take us through the next resolution, which is in support of uniform physician badging?
And Judge Hillary White could not be here, so I had Kathy come stand with me.
Wonderful. Good morning.
Whereas upon recommendation from the Texas Governor's Eye of the Storm Report outlining the recommendation to move all first responders in the State of Texas to one standardized photo ID credentialing system, whereas the aforementioned report and recommendations contained were established from findings and gaps identified post Hurricane Harvey. Whereas the Coastal Bend Regional Advisory Council and the Nuñez County Medical Society, supported by Nuñez County Judge Barbara Canales and Commissioners' Court, will collaborate to implement a standardized single photo ID card for physicians in the 12-county Coastal Bend area. All major hospitals and healthcare providers in said 12-county region fully support the project. Whereas this initiative is Phase 1 of several whereby all first responders will be badged moving forward, and the standardized physician ID card will be recognized by Nuñez County Judge as the standard ID card moving forward for re-entry post disasters.
Thank you. Kathy, would you like to make any comment in support or does emergency management recommend support of this resolution?
Yes. Emergency management recommends this resolution. It's good to have standardization of identification.
Thank you so much. Do I have a motion? And a second? Any further discussion? Just, I want to recognize that we had really a great presentation by Hillary, I guess, last court, and we believe this to be in the best interest of Nuñez County. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Pose same sign. Thank you so much, Kathy. And if you would let Hillary know that we did that today, I know she'd be pleased. Thank you. His name is Benjamin Avalos Jr., and he has been with this county in the auditor's office. I'm not sure if the entire 23 years is in the auditor's office, but 23 years of service is an amazing career in any profession, but to give so, really, to the dedication of the highest duty, which is our budget, is exceptional, and it is with great pride that I have the distinct honor to express on behalf of all of us, our sincere appreciation to Benjamin S. Avalos Jr. in grateful recognition of 23 years of service in Nuñez County, signed this July 19th, 2019 by myself, Barbara Canales, and the rest of the Commissioners' Court. And I would love very much if you'd like to come and say something at the podium, but at least give us the opportunity to say thank you to you. I'm going to come down in just a minute, but if you'd like to tell everybody what a great boss you've had.
Good morning, everybody. I am so grateful for the opportunity to have served the county, and I want to thank you all for making our work here better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Honored to present this to you, and thank you to family members who came today to join in this very special recognition. I'm sorry, your sons? Would you like to take a picture with us?
Step-sister?
Step-sister, it's family time. It's a really, you all sacrificed too, so we're grateful to all of you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
He's going to be hard to replace.
As they say, so far, so good. The good feelings, just the good vibes, just keep on rolling. Now we're going to move into special recognition, and to keep the ball rolling with all this good momentum, is a very special recognition for Amistad Community Health Center and also Mr. Alan Wilson. And I was going to ask Alan if you might come to the podium and allow me just to set the stage, but then I'm going to let you take over. Today's an opportunity for Commissioners' Court and particularly myself to recognize an outstanding member of our community. Some of you might know Alan as being a former Chamber of Commerce President. You might know him as a banker. You might know him as having served on the South Texas Military Task Force. There are so many numerous community and civic organizations, too many to mention. But the truth is, is that most recently, something really special happened, and I thought it was important enough that we all just take a moment to acknowledge it, and that is the Amistad Community Health Center located on Brownlee Street, not too far from here, where people can, both adults and children, have the opportunity, that really fall into a gap, to get free medical health care. And it's such a special place, they also do behavioral health there as well. It's a federally qualified health center. It's really just as innovative as it gets, and for the last six years, Alan Wilson has led the board as their president. And just, I suppose, has it been not just a week, maybe just a week ago, there was a great big celebration because a new pediatric wing was open, and it was opened in the name of Alan Wilson. And I'm just so proud to be a part of Nuñez County where individuals that are just doing so much take the time to care about the most vulnerable amongst us. And so Alan, I don't have a fancy certificate yet, but we're going to get you one. They're very, very highly sought after, but the truth is, I wanted to make sure that the people that watch us live here, the people in the audience and that are hearing us all over the county today, understand that we honor you today and all the work you've done, and just tell us a little bit more, it's a good opportunity to share about Amistad.
Judge Canales and Commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about something that I love. So I'd like to talk about Amistad Community Health Center. What are federally qualified health centers? And I'll be brief. Give you a little bit of our history and then tell you where we'd like to go. So, we are a federally qualified health center. Why? Who are, what do we do? What differentiates us? As many of us have the blessing of having a primary care-physician relationship, there's many people that are uninsured or underinsured that don't have that luxury, and they are forced to only react when they get sick and go to an emergency room. So the government puts some incentives to create federally qualified health centers so that hospitals could, I don't want to use the word "drive," but encourage people to come to a community health center like we are so that they can have primary care. Well, how can we do that when regular doctors can't? We have funding sources to be able to create primary care relationships. So it's so much better for a person that doesn't, is not able to have insurance and only has an emergency room option for treatment, to be able to have a relationship with a doctor like many of us do that ends up over time being preventive and maintenance and helpful to their overall health care. So, Amistad was formed in 2005. In 2008, we became a federally qualified health center. At that time, we had 1,000 patients, we had 20 employees. Fast forward to today, in 2019, we now have 70 employees and over 12,000 patients. We are sound financially. Our mission is a faith-based, Christian mission of healing physically and spiritually. And thankful to you for coming last week to the dedication of the pediatric wing, it's the Thomas Span Clinic. We own the building free and clear, and that expansion in the pediatric wing means that we filled that whole building up with services. Like you said, we started out with medical services, we added dental services, last year we added behavioral health services. We also have hepatitis C treatments that, you know, can now heal hepatitis C. We have diabetes education and treatment, and we have many nutrition education programs, all of it geared to help people be healthier. We have applied for a grant to expand now, we're able to expand, and our next place we'd like to be in Robstown, and we'd like to pledge to the county and the Commissioners in your quest to help provide citizens in Nuñez County a better medical and behavioral and all kinds of medical services, we'd like to come alongside and do everything we can to help you improve the lives of the people in Nuñez County.
And you're doing it. And Amistad in Spanish means friendship, so I can't imagine a better source of friendship than taking care of them. I think Robstown is actually, we have some, I see Elva here, we have some wonderful people from the city of Robstown, and I know that must be music to their ears to be able to have a clinic of this caliber, and it's just great. If people want to go to the clinic, can they just walk in?
Yes, it's better.
To get an appointment?
To get an appointment, but let me just say, no one is turned away.
That's what I thought. No one is turned away. Commissioners, I just wanted, I thought it was such an outstanding event, such an outstanding program. We really had not highlighted Amistad, and I'm certain you probably, if you haven't already, Alan would love to give you a tour. I can promise you, there's people in your precinct that would benefit by the Amistad Health Clinic.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Mr. Wilson?
I just want to say, congratulations. In fact, Amistad is one of my outside agencies that I support because of Bill Flotis.
Yes.
You know, and of course, and your director. But I just want to say, thank you for everything you do for those, not just the young, but even the older people out there. And without you guys, in fact, we want you to be part of our mobile clinic that we're going to have.
Right.
So we want you to jump on board and maybe do a week. So we'll be touching base with you on our next project of the mobile clinic for the rural areas.
Be happy to try to help.
Okay? Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And now I have the privilege of announcing August 2019, the Nuñez County Employee of the Month. And are you sure it's not July? Isn't it still July? But it's August, Margaret?
She wants a full month of the parking place.
Ah, I got it. I got it. The perk. Okay. Well, I want to first say that I really, I love investing in people. My whole life, people have invested in me, and I think that's why I've enjoyed the success that I've had. And so, this is about paying it forward, it's about listening, and what I heard from a lot of employees was that we needed to recognize people's hard work. And it's wonderful to do it after 23 years, but it's also even better while you're here to say, "We appreciate you." So we've started a few things that we hope that will catch on and be just really wonderful. Wellness luncheons are one of them, and people are really taking advantage here in the courthouse and beyond. But this Employee of the Month was an amazing opportunity to celebrate the people that were nominated by their department heads, and I'm here to announce that our very first Employee of the Month and the winner of the 30-day Awesome Parking Space is Ms. Ruth Dominguez. And I want to congratulate Ruth. And I don't want to embarrass her too much, but the way this works, since you're the very first one, the way this is going to work is every month we will recognize somebody. And department heads, you have the ability to nominate, and Margaret, are you, does it go straight to your office? And I also want to thank Margaret Mead because the truth is, is that none of this would have been able to be possible if she didn't create the structure for us to celebrate people in our county. I actually got emotional when I read this, because Ruth, sometimes we're asked to do things that are out of our comfort zone, and if you won't tell too many people, only a few thousand people are listening, there's things that I'm out of my comfort zone on, but I have to have confidence in the people that helped lift me up, and I think your entire HR department lifted you up. Julie Guerra nominated you as your department head, and it's my understanding that you were the project leader for our new county-wide software implementation, and this was a very big task, and you proved that with perseverance that you could accomplish this project. I know you spent numerous hours having to basically research and read. This was a completely new idea that we had never really entered before. You had to talk to all the different vendors, the customer service representatives. I could go on and on, all the training sessions, all the material for all the hiring of the managers. You literally gave life to the "Go Live" goal, and you stepped up to the challenge. And for all of this, your amazing accomplishments, and just the fact that you set a goal for yourself, and you met it, and you did it in record time, and with everybody around you inspired to also maybe get out of their comfort zone and ask to be in charge of new tasks. We are so excited that you're the very first, at least in my administration, Employee of the Month, Ruth. Thanks so much for everything. And if you would turn around, we could all stand up, and we'll take a picture. And Julie, if you want to, okay? She needs to be front and center.
This will probably wind up in the newsletter.
Oh, I'd love that. That's great.
Where's the cake?
Come on in, family.
Right there, it's fine.
We want to thank all of you guys for coming and supporting your mom, long hours.
Well, I just want to thank Judge Canales and the Commissioners for this great honor. I want to thank Julie for nominating me. She is a really great boss to work for. She is a really great boss to work for, for me and all of our coworkers. She makes it fun. She makes me want to come to work. And, you know, she gave me the challenge. And it is, I'm not a computer person at all. They all knew that. But it was done. And hopefully, it's going to work well. And it's way better than anything we had before. But I'm really proud to have been nominated. And it's been a pleasure to work for Human Resources and Nueces County. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can't remember, there are some bells and whistles, right, Margaret? There's some nice perks. Do you want to just make the announcement, just to remind everybody? I know so many of our, all of our employees work very hard. And I wish we could give certificates to everybody. But it is nice, I think, to be able to recognize somebody for their extraordinary work.
Well, the first thing, they're, of course, across the street in the La Pan parking lot, they're going to get a real spiffy, nice, closed parking place with a sign, Employee of the Month. And of course, the certificate, they're going to have their picture taken. It's going to be framed. And we're going to place it somewhere downstairs where everybody can see it when they walk in. And they're also going to be treated lunch with Judge Canales and their director.
That's great.
So, a couple of nice little things that they're going to.
I'm looking forward to it. I really am. Okay, well, thanks again. I think it's a great program and look forward to next month's Employee of the Month. At this time, I'm going to ask Deputy or Edward, who's back in the back? Can someone bring me the public comment? Appreciate it. Thanks, Edward. We do have some public comments today. The first is Margaret. I didn't see you. Margaret Fratila, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, commissioners. Nice to see you all. I just wanted to tell everybody that yesterday at the city council, I was so impressed. I was just ready to leave when I saw you walking. Didn't know what the subject is it. But you told us about Census. And it's very touchy for me because 10 years ago, I was working for Census 10 months. And I was looking for all day every morning to meet people because I love to meet people. I went door to door. It doesn't matter, Molina, whatever it is, I made new friends. And that's giving me a lot of, you know, training for my campaign. So, I was like so excited about that. Interesting thing, when we walk out, we just say, "See you in 10 years." And everybody, I don't know if I'm alive. I don't know if I'll be still here. I was so excited to keep in touch with a lot of them. And a few things that I wanted to tell you, we were meeting every day at 12 o'clock to our office, Whataburger, with our supervisor. And we were giving feedback to everyone. Now, what you're doing is commendable because you're doing electronically. People can sign up. And yesterday, we had just a short visit. And you told me that you're going to have, for sure, information who signed up online and who didn't. Because if we go door to door, we have to know where we're going. So, your project is amazing. I think that people should know about that. And also, we just need really all community to stay behind. Because right now, with a question about like, "I'm here, why are you here? You want to get me out?" Or something like that, the first question 10 years ago was like, "Are you going to take us out from here?" And I go, "No, I just want to be sure that you have schools, you have restaurants, you have, you know, medical assistance." So, what I saw, and that was remarkable, that I wanted to make you aware of, people maybe don't know their neighbors across the street or next door to them, but they know for sure the vacant lots, how long they've been there, how long vacant houses they're there. And I was in shock because I saw houses that the city didn't really know about these houses. And when I said, "What are you doing with those houses here?" For 25 years, 30 years, people lived next door to that. So, I would like to make, you know, a proposal. If you can, discuss with everybody, enumerators, whoever's going in field, you know, and I want to participate definitely in that process. And to make sort of inventory to see these houses. I mean, I was doing because I was very, you know, in shock. And they're still there today. So, maybe you can be more appreciable to do that than the city because you're in charge of that. So, I appreciate the project that you take it in your hands. I'll be happy to help you 24/7 for that. I love it. And plus, you know, I know the routine maybe is a little bit changed. And I really like to go door to door or just guide everybody to go there. And thank you so much for taking this project and for what you're doing. And anyway, we can help you to raise money for that amazing project. And this electronically is like upgraded after 10 years. I remember we were doing $10 an hour, maybe right now it's 18. I don't know. But it's not important that. It's important to do our job for the county. Thank you so much, and God bless you for everything.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And now, Mr. Robert Heil.
Good morning to the commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Robert Heil. I'm a local attorney and civil rights advocate here. I'd like to thank the distinguished panel for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'd like to address an issue that I believe is of significant public importance. I'm going to challenge each of the commissioners and judges to expand their comfort zone, as the honorable judge has said, to talk about the issues that I'm going to address. What I'd like to talk about is an issue that's currently before the commissioners and the judge on the agenda today. It's a significant matter of public concern. It affects civil rights and, more importantly, gender and gay rights. As the commissioners may be aware, many citizens in our community are, have a sexual preference of gay. Many of those individuals are basically singled out and targeted because of that, unfortunately. It's my belief that that is occurring in Nueces County, as we sit here today, and that the county does have employees that it needs to take notice of and to protect and to ensure that due process can be protected for these individuals. Ms. Canales correctly talked about investing in these employees and these citizens, protecting the civil rights of all citizens in Nueces County. And one such individual is before the commissioners on the agenda today. And I believe that his civil rights are currently being violated. We've presented evidence and submitted what we believe is compelling information that we'd like to challenge the commissioners to explore in greater detail, to be inquisitive, to ask questions. And we're here to engage the process in a way to open the channels of communications, to bring awareness to the commission of this important issue. But we believe that due process is not being upheld in this matter. We believe that essentially, individuals who are of a preference of gay or who have had their civil rights being violated are being railroaded and the doors are being closed rather than opened. And so, I want to ask each of the commissioners to look at this agenda item today, to open the channels of communication, to engage this process, and to afford due process for an individual who's being affected who is a gay American. I understand that that's going to put everybody outside of their comfort zone a little bit. And it's, some of these issues are sensitive and difficult to discuss. But I think it's very important that we open up the discussion to protect gay rights. It's important that we open up a marketplace of ideas that we can all openly and freely protect rights and affect and discuss people who are affected by this important issue. So, I'm here today as a civil rights advocate to advocate on his behalf, to challenge all citizens in Nueces County to stand up for gay rights and civil rights and to ask the commissioners to look at these issues. It's our view on this case that we're not getting the message across, and that's why we're here today. We want to ask that all the documents that have been submitted be looked at. We want the opportunity for my client to actually be able to cross-examine his accusers, to engage the process of due process. That has not been afforded to him. Basically, he's been railroaded and brushed aside. After having reported discrimination, he was terminated, even though that could be a violation of his rights. So, we do have an important issue. We do have a lot of support in the LGBTQ community behind us. We believe that it is an issue of supreme concern. And we'd like to ask for due process. We'd like to ask each commissioner, each judge, to look at this and get information. Allow him to cross-examine his accusers. He has alleged that the allegations against him are false. We'd like the opportunity to present information on that because it's not right to just brush someone aside. And if there is evidence of discrimination, it should be looked at, it should be addressed, and it should be corrected. And in closing, I'd just like to say that whenever an individual's rights are violated, we all need to take pause. We all need to take a step back. We need to look at that. We need to understand it. And most importantly, we need to correct it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to remind the audience that at public comment, commissioners and the judge make no comment back at this time. And I will return this unless any commissioners need this for any reason. Okay? It's all right. We'll just get it there. I believe we're going to move towards the consent agenda at this time and would ask all commissioners to review quickly. And is there anything that, I'll either entertain a motion to approve all A through N, N as in Nancy, or is there anything that needs special consideration that needs to be pulled?
Item H, Judge.
H is pulled. Okay? Anything else? I'm going to pull I just for clarification as well. Kind of goes hand in hand with H.
And M.
And M as in Mary? That's it? Ms. Vaughn? None? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion, please, for A through G, and then J, K, L, and N. And a second? And all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye? Post same sign. Madam Clerk, did I go too quick there? You got me? Okay. Let's go ahead and take H. And I would ask that Michael come forward and address H, I, and M for, actually, you know what, Michael? Everything but N will be yours. So, just stay up here for a little bit. Let's talk about giving us some background on H.
Okay, so, H, this is the lease of farmland that's adjacent to the county airport. The current lease is expiring on September the 1st of 2019. It's currently being leased by Edward and Jane Youngman Farms. It was a three-year lease with the option to extend for two additional one-year periods. Those have all elapsed. And so, we're just asking to renew the, asking to go out for bids on the new lease.
All right. So, Michael, does this, you know, there's a lot of talk and attention that's being put onto the airport. You know, we have a great facility that we dedicated last year, and we're doing all we can. I know that's a priority for the judge, for myself. It's in my backyard there in Precinct 3. Does this prevent us from any long-term planning? Or can, if an opportunity comes up for runway expansion or any of the other plans that we have out there, does this prevent us from being able to terminate the contract and then moving forward on those plans?
No. And I'm glad you asked that. I was reviewing that the other night. And I noticed we do have some language within the contract that if we choose to extend the existing runway, it will thereby reduce the amount of the lease payment for the individuals that are selected as the lessor. So, that way, like I said, if we extend the runway, their lease amount comes down. And then, we still have the option if we want to change our mind about what we want to do with this. There's language in there to allow notification to get out of that lease.
Sounds good.
Let me ask this. Let's just say you gave them notification and they had a crop in the field. And it exceeded the time they were going to get their crop in. Does the county pay for that crop that they're going to lose?
So, Laura, would you like to?
I mean, that's very important for a farmer.
I think, I thought we had some language in there to that effect that we do. But I haven't looked at the actual bidding documents. I'll, let me review that and I'll get an answer to you.
Yeah, we need, because that is something important that they need to be covered for.
If we're moving fast, I mean, it's still going to take probably a year. We just, I want to make sure if it's a three-year lease or whatever, that we can cut it off after a year. Because I'm sure a year would be enough planning for the season, right?
Yeah, it's just according to what they planted, when they planted it. Because I'm unplanted later. And my other question was, how do they get the bidding packet when this goes out?
So, this gets published in the newspaper. And they can pick it up on publicpurchase.com. They can pick it up in our office as well. We usually send out notifications, of course, to the existing lease individual so that they're notified as well.
I just think you're probably going to have some interest in that.
Sure.
Because farmland is getting sparse.
Hopefully, we do.
That's great. Is there a motion then for H?
Some move.
Okay, second. And I think Ms. Jimenez is going to get back to you then on that as well. And all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye? Post same sign. Okay, and speaking of aye, we're going to go to letter aye. And aye was the same thing. It's just the, it's just good, I think, to give everybody the update here.
Sure. So, on I, this is requesting to go out for bids for ADA modifications to the courthouse side exterior. These modifications are going to include replacement of the sidewalks that are non-ADA compliant. There will be pavement modifications to allow for ADA parking. The ADA parking will be required to have access aisles and pavement markings. And additionally, there'll be ADA parking signage. This is all funded out of the Courthouse ADA Improvements Fund, 1921-2001. The plans and specs have already been provided to purchasing for this project. And we expect to advertise this very soon. It'll advertise for 14 consecutive days, and we'll open on the 15th day and then come back to the court for discuss and award. The timing looks like that opening could be around the end of August with discuss and award being at the front of September and hopefully, execute a contract by the end of September.
And I just pulled it, commissioners, because I want you all and the audience to know how committed we are to really advancing the ball on ADA. Tyner and I made a pledge to those folks at the Department of Justice that we were going to bring them some real results. And we got to get going. And I really like seeing this on our agenda because this is exactly what we promised. So, we are moving forward to that 2021 completion date. So, thank you, Michael, for that. And then, I think the last one was M as in Mary?
Just a clarification. We're talking about the courthouse here? We're talking countywide?
We're talking about the courthouse grounds here in the parking lot directly outside.
Just the courthouse. Exterior.
Okay. Let's just make sure we're talking.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am?
Motion.
We didn't get a motion on that one. So, let's get a motion on both. No, we did, we did on H.
Yeah, we did.
We did on H. And, right, on I. A motion, please, and then a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
I move on M.
And now, I've got a motion on M. And looking for a second?
Second.
And then, let's have the discussion now. So, can you just give us a little more information there?
Sure. So, on this one, we're requesting to seek proposals for security assessment consulting services and also for the purchasing agent to publish a notice and adopt an order delegating evaluation authority to a selection committee. We're needing services to look at our overall security plan here at the courthouse. And they will, this individual will be working directly with the county sheriff to help identify areas of opportunity. The assessment will be conducted over several phases. And the administration oversight will be provided by the sheriff for this important task. And the evaluation, this type of bid being proposals is going to allow an equal playing field for all of those interested parties to participate in providing this specialized service to the county in multiple areas besides just price alone. So.
Motion and, we've got a motion and a second. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye? Post same sign. Okay, great. Thank you, Michael. And that concludes the consent agenda. And now, we'll move into the regular agenda items. And we're going to start off this morning with a briefing from Estrada Inojosa, the county's financial advisors, who will present a financial overview. But you know what? I haven't seen them this morning. And, well, you know what? Since they're not in the courtroom and they have a PowerPoint to load, why don't we go to number two? Someone, Edward, would you be so nice, go outside and see if you can get Bobby Villarreal? If they're here, we can advance it. They're just, okay. I've often thought we needed speakers out there. That way, they know. The nice thing that's about to happen is that we're all going to get a little bit of a tutorial on the ramifications or consequences, I guess, of Senate Bill 2 from this '86 Texas legislative session that dealt with property tax reform. And as such, instituted a 3.5% revenue cap on counties to be started or commenced next Hospital districts, Johnny, were not affected in Senate Bill 2. You got lucky. School districts were very affected. So, welcome. See how fast I am? No, do you have a PowerPoint that needs to be downloaded or? Noi, do you have a PowerPoint that needs to be downloaded, or no? If not, no big deal. I just want to give it to Tyner if you do. Well, if not, we all have it. At your pleasure. Certainly not a requirement.
Whenever I email you?
Okay.
I can't. Sorry about that. I didn't...
I'll tell you what. Can we start with the Senate Bill Two while he works on that?
Why don't we do that?
Let's start there. Senate Bill Two Legislative Update. And of course, everyone, we're welcoming Mr. Noi Inojosa, and Bobby Villarreal as well, who is part of the financial advising team.
Thank you, Judge. Members of the...
Salute.
Noi Inojosa with Estrada Inojosa and Company. Basically, session is over. Some people say it's good to only have a meet once every two years, so that's... I guess that's good. That is over. Senate Bill Two, as you well described earlier, maybe in previous meetings, was probably the most that affected a lot of municipal entities all across Texas. This only applies to cities and counties, not necessarily school districts or other political divisions like community colleges and hospital districts. It only affects cities and counties. It's fair to state in the past, anytime that a city or a county imposes a tax rate that would result in a tax levy to be in excess of 8%, the taxpayer will have a right, by gathering signatures, to subject you to a rollback, meaning that if you ever exceeded that 8%, they can come back, file protests together, have you to go back to the original rate of the previous year. The tax rate causes, based on the tax assessed value, causes you to come up with a tax levy. And the tax levy, when it's an excess, when it was an excess of 8%, it will cause that, it will trigger that rollback. Now, the state says, we don't want to... We don't want the counties to be subjected to the 8%. Now it has to be lowered to 3.5%. That will come into effect, not this upcoming fiscal year of 2020, but it will be in effect for the 2021 fiscal year. So they're kind of giving you one year for you to make the adjustments necessary so that in years to come, that budget needs to be at the 3.5, not an excess of 3.5%. I think it's important to note that in recent years... Dale, you probably will help me with this. The county has never, ever came close to an 8% rollback rate. We always stayed below that. I think for fiscal year ending this '19 versus '18, the rollback rate was at about 5%. So, if...
Greater than the cap that they've just imposed, however.
That's why I brought it up, so that you know, going forward, you will not be able... I mean, you can be able to do whatever you want to do, but then you could be subject to this rollback petition. So, again, the county, I think over the last 10 years, I think I said maybe two or three years where it went over 3.5%. So, by very de minimis, you know, rates, maybe a half a percent. I think one year was 4%, other year was about 4.5%, and then this last year was 5%. I said that it would only affect the 2021 budget, not the 2020 budget. It only applies to cities and counties with a population of over 30,000 people. So if you're a city or a county that has a population of less than 30,000, you're still at the old rollback rate of 8%. Disaster areas that are declared by the governor or the president are not affected either. So, if you, like when Harvey came through, if Nejess County was declared by the governor or the president as a disaster area, you'd be given the right for the subsequent year to go back to the 8%. And pretty much that's it. I would encourage you, I know that there are association representatives with the Texas Association of County officials that have their lawyers, TML for that matter, has been of great assistance, not only in advocating the interests of cities and counties before the committees that took on this legislature, but I wanted to just kind of give you the general overview of the big picture of what you need to be focused on as a potential of this bill that was just approved. So with that, I'll stop and entertain questions you may have on this matter.
I was concerned, and I think CUC Policy Committee was highly concerned, that the rating agencies, if 3.5% you know were to pass, and of course it eventually did, that that would affect, you know, our rating capabilities, our rating, it would affect our ratings, you know, going forward. Do you see anything like that? I mean, we're certainly going to be bound by a very small cap. I mean, when you consider that one cent, a little over one cent levy last year equals about 4.3% in, you know, percentage rate, way over the cap, it seems like you're really here, you're very much constrained, and I'm wondering how the rating agencies are going to view that for large urban counties with great infrastructure needs.
Well, I think what's important for you to note is that when you do infrastructure projects and you finance for them, in the case of a county, that's repaid with a portion of your tax rate called the interest and sinking fund tax rate. And the interest and sinking fund tax rate is not subject to rollback. So, so think of this. Your total tax rate, I believe, is what, 31 cents?
Correct.
31 cents, and about 4.5 cents is your INS tax rate. If, if the 31 cents were to levy $90 million, and that $90 million combined exceeds the 3.5%, you're subject to the rollback rate, but only the MNO tax rate of the total tax rate. So, if the 4.5 pennies that you dedicate today for debt levies, just to say a number, $10 million, in the following year, because you have new values, like I think you did this year, you're at 8%, your TAV projections for next year added 8%.
Correct.
Versus this current year. That INS tax rate is going to levy not $10 million, but $10,800,000. If this was fiscal year 2021, you say, well, the limit is $10,350. Well, for INS purposes, you're not subjected to the rollback. You have to go take the 5, the 450 from the MNO side. So your budget, your general fund budget, has to be streamlined. So you have to be careful in when you do capital project financing, that you're taking into account that, oh, my God, if I'm going up over here, how's it going to affect my MNO side as I'm going about putting together my budget? So the rating agencies, going back to the issue rating agencies, the rating agencies, in the methodology of the way they view not only your credit, but everybody else's credits, they care literally about four things. They care about the general economy of the entity. They put a place a big way on that. The fact that your values are growing, that's nothing but good. The fact that you have community colleges here, universities, that the median incomes are rising, that's good. So they, and other factors associated to the economy. The second component they look at is your debt. How much debt do you have, and how does it compare to counties your size? What's just as important is the challenges that that community has, and how willing are you to address those challenges? And willingness also affects your ability. So as property values rise, but your tax rate is constrained to 3.5%, the rating agencies look at that as a negative. At this moment, I don't believe that the rating agencies have expressed a concern over 3.5% because rating agencies normally don't do anything to political divisions until they see a trend. They don't react from one year to the next unless you did something spectacularly irresponsible. They will come out and pin you for that. So they look at trends. And right now, they're going to sit and watch and see how you all, not only you, Nejess County, but the two other 153 counties in the state that have a population of more than 30,000, how you're going to react. I can assure you that they don't like it because whenever you constrain revenues...
Sure.
It has an effect of, you know, adversity for you as you go about managing your county's budget and facing capital projects. So, so with that, for example, if you were to have a voter referendum on a project and taxes rise, you know, again, the INS tax rate is not affected, but conceivably the tax levy being greater than 3.5% may be affected. And those are the things that we have to, I guess, navigate as we go about presenting to you, you know, future issues of need, I guess. I hope...
No, that's a very good... I mean, I think, I think for the layperson, there was concern that certificate of obligations and other instruments of debt would be included in the 3.5%. And that did not occur, and that was welcome.
Yeah.
But it still affects your... You still have to play a balancing act with your INS and your...
So it's not unusual for us to be brought up now more often to bodies like yours to tell you about, hey, give us a financial overview, at least on the debt side, before we start working on our budget. So what you're doing today and asking us to come before you is pretty much things of the norm today now.
So that's a good transition. So I think on the screen now, we have the graph of outstanding debt. Do you want to start there?
Sure. So basically, as of July 22 of '19, the county today has eight loans. So think of these loans as if they were mortgages. This, the county has $115 million of outstanding debt, and that is supported, collateralized basically, by about $29.4 billion. So from a perspective of debt, the county is in a very, you know, reasonable condition. I mean, you don't have anything that...
In fact, it's about 8% of our ability to... That's what I think your report said, that it represented 8% of our debt ability. I don't know, I read that somewhere.
Well, I mean...
That whatever our, whatever the right ratio is, that there is a maximum debt that that taxable assessed value can support, and that $115 million represents only 8% of that. I'm trying to remember where that was in your...
Yeah, well, there's a lot of, I suspect that the rate you're talking about is the overlapping jurisdictions, where you include the city, school district...
That's actually correct.
When you add them all up, 8% may be the number that is supported by this value.
Okay.
There are pages that I've included in the back of the report, basically that shows that your debt to taxable value is 4/10 of a percent. In fact, if you go to the back, there's a table number three. So basically, when you look at that table three from right to left, the second column shows that the $115 million worth of debt outstanding is supported by the $29.4 billion, and that represents a .39 as a ratio to TAV. A county, a county government normally has a ratio, could have a ratio of as much as 2%, but somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.5 to 2%. So that's why when I mentioned to you that your debt is very reasonably low, it is reasonably low. I mean, we, you know, this county has been very, I guess, has conditioned itself to borrow as little as it can and face, and face capital projects, I guess, with the operating budget. So that's important to note. So, going back to the page on, that we were on earlier, if you go and look at the tax rate, historically, this tax rate in '16 was 31.69, dropped to 30.80, 30.80 again in '18, and then it was brought back up to about 31.31. I didn't bring with me the top 25 county comparables. I think I shared some of that information with some of you in the past, but I would challenge to say that the tax rate of 31 cents is pretty much in the, right in the middle of the, of the pack with all the counties across the state. The ratings of the county are AA2 by Moody's and AA by S&amp;P. The graphs below, it pretty much shows you how the county's debt structure is set up today. It's important always to keep in mind that as you go about borrowing money, what does it look like on the way out in terms of how long is it going to take me to pay this off? How am I paying it off? And what you're looking for is the difference of that red line, that's kind of like your tax levy from the INS tax rate. You're bringing in about $13 million of tax levy, and you're paying off the blue bar and the gray bar. And as you see that red line go across, we're assuming that you're going to keep that tax rate at the same level. We're also assuming that property values will remain the same. So, the difference between the red line and the bars is what we call in our business debt capacity. So as you can see, the debt capacity for the foreseeable near future of the next seven or eight years is pretty limited. So anything you go out and borrow, you're going to have to make an adjustment on the tax rate, or play around with your debt as it currently stands, so that you can create capacity in another fashion. The row that is in yellow there, the bonds that are in yellow, is basically an opportunity to refinance current bonds that trade at a higher interest rate than what the market bears. In other words, you can do a refinancing of that and take some savings. We've done that for this county in the past, so that's, we want to point that out. I know at least a month or two ago, we were, we were tasked with, you know, how, how can we go about addressing capital needs of this county? And I share with you that I think it's important that if you're going to go about borrowing money, that we have a capital improvement plan, and that we list those needs. And the list of those needs are going to be based on what you believe to be urgent, absolutely necessary, or just necessary, or just desirable. And based on those priorities, then you go about, you know, taking on those needs. So I don't believe that we have been given any feedback on that in terms of what your needs may be, but I know it's coming soon. But what we did, just in anticipation of you thinking we may need to finance something this year or the following year, I wanted to kind of give you a perspective. Once you give us a task on how to go about funding some of these needs, what we're going to do with your debt model so that the impact on tax rate can be as minimal as possible, and if we can mitigate it to nothing. So today, if you were to do absolutely nothing, if you were to not borrow any money this fiscal year, maybe a little bit too much, from left to right, you'll see all this, I call this the ugly sheet, and just, and I actually try to color it and make it look pretty good. There's no way around it. The 2019 fiscal year is the year you're in, and you're paying, you're paying $29.4 billion. I mean, you're using $29.4 billion of taxable value, and your debt service is $9,900,000. And then it goes up, I'm talking about the fourth column from left to right. This year's debt service payment is $9.9 million. Next year's 12.5 million. And you're going, wow, why, how did that happen? Well, if you recall, we ran into a little challenge last year's budget in that we found that the savings account in this particular fund had been depleted, that if we would have not done some restructuring on it, we would have had a bigger problem in that our savings account would probably go into zero or below that, right, Dale? And thus, we did a restructuring of that payment in order to, if you look at the top right-hand corner, there's a number there, $4,344. That's our estimated balance for this year. By virtue of reducing the payment in 2019, from what we thought originally was going to be 12.5 million to about $9 million, we were able to restore immediately that savings account. So now that we have the $4,300,000, think of it as your savings account to pay up to $12 million. So now that we have the $4,300,000, think of it as your savings account to pay up to $12 million when things that are maybe hard, like if you have a Harvey again, or, or, you know, property values being challenged, that savings account helps you offset your ability to lack of collections in case of, you know, trying times. So it's important for you to have 10 to 15 percent in that savings account. Here, we're trying to keep it at about 25 percent, and that's what you have there. So, but going forward, you know, going back to the bars that I was showing you on the previous page. Your payments, if you look at 2020 on that bar, are going back to 12 and a half million, where it used to be. So, so again, that's where you are today. We're looking at, okay, what happens between 19 and 2020? Your value growth is estimated eight percent. Right now, going forward.
Did you just guess that? That's, that's pretty like right on the money.
No, Dale has been, Dale and his staff has been very instrumental.
Wow, I was going to say, that's, that's some, I'm going to be on your team. That's a crystal ball. That one worked.
Well, I wish we were that good. I think if I was that good, I wouldn't be here. I'd be somewhere else, but.
Okay, so, so you knew in advance that was a good guesstimate?
We've been working with Dale's office very closely.
Okay.
And, and I was hoping Dale that if you would jump in, if you see anything wrong here. So.
I mean, I think it's conservative. We may be at eight and a half. We might even get to nine, but I think eight is a very good number.
And that's always good. Going forward, though, even though you, you think you're going to grow to eight percent or nine percent, we're estimating only three and a half percent, because that's your limit that will bust you into your rollback rate. So we're using three and a half percent from 21 through 25. And then we even become more conservative and put a one percent beyond that. So that as we model your needs, or your financing needs for that matter, we're being conservative, we think, on the way we're growing your values. So no extending that, quickly jump over to the third column from right to left, and you'll see a little bullet in yellow there. And basically, that, that shows you that if you do nothing this fiscal year, your tax rate for INS will have to drop from the current 4.4 cents to 4.14 cents, because your value grew by eight percent. And your debt, despite the fact that it went higher from the $9.9 million to $12.5 million, you know, the $12.5 million is, is, you're over collecting, if you were to keep the tax rate at 4.4 cents, you'd be over collecting what you need. So.
So we can drop the INS rate?
That's right. So that's, that's where you are today, if you were to do nothing. As you go forward, on the, if you flip to the next page. Hey, what is, I'm, I'm doing this, I'm kind of proud of myself. I think, I wish my kids were here, so they could see that, that I can play with, around with this computer here. Here, what we're showing you is what if you were to finance, what if you were to do $50 million? Just to say the number. Well, by the way, there's a fifth column there from left to right, that says at the top, let's refunding savings. Those are, that's a little refinancing we have that we think we can get you some savings of about, you know.
Were those on those CO10s? Is that refinancing, is that restructuring the CO10s?
Yeah.
Okay.
That gets you about $270,000 bucks of savings.
Okay.
That's how we intend to deploy the savings.
Got it.
And we will only do it if you were to do anything this year. We would not bring that deal by itself. But again, if you were to do 50 million, look at your payments. On the front end in 2020, it'd be $1,079,000, then $1,972,000. And not until 2028, do we bring the payments from $1,972,000 to $4,700,000. I said, well, by doing, by you doing that, you're deferring principal to the back. That's if you were to do $50 million. By doing that, that's the only way you can preserve your tax rate at the current level. In other words, if you would not want to raise taxes for this particular component of the tax rate, you would have to defer principal. And also not be willing to, if you look at the next column, where it says, is your contribution surplus? That contribution will come from where? It will come from your savings account that we mentioned earlier, the $4,344. So over the next four years, you will be expected to make contributions from that fund to a total of about $2.25 million over the next four years, which will then offset your $4,344. The thing about that savings account, and Dale will share with us, and I will back him up, is that we're using collections of 95 percent. And a lot of times, the county is well in excess of 98 and a half to 99 percent. So because of our conservative nature, we suspect that that draw from the fund balance is not going to be as significant as we pointed out there in these numbers. But again, if, if you wanted to borrow 50, just to say that number, and only for this year, then that will be the way to structure, if you wanted to structure, and not raise your tax rate. So certainly, there are other ways of, of paying debt. You can pay debt with level annual debt service, where basically your payments are level from the moment you start paying. And that will, that number will probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $3.7 million annually. But the difference between $1,007,000 and $3,700,000, it's about $2 million. One penny brings in 3 million, right? At 95 percent, probably brings 2.9 million. So you have to make an adjustment of a penny upward in order to be able to, to pay that debt. Now, you can raise the INS tax rate by a penny and still achieve a not tax rate increase by bringing the M&amp;O side of the tax rate down by one penny. That's why you have to take into account budget and debt. Then, as well, do you really need to go and do this in one year, $50 million?
Yeah. Do you, are you realistically going to spend that much in one capital, in one year, in capital infrastructure?
So in fact, before, and, you know, and I'm giving an overview, we're not making recommendations today, but I think, in talking to County Auditor's Office, you know, we asked, what are, where, what kind of balances do you have on the bond issues that we've sold in the past? And there are some balances in previous bond issues that we can look into encumbering, and the quicker we do that, the better. So, so we found some little balances out there in bonds that were in excess of four or five years, but we still have balances on bonds that were sold just, I think, maybe two years ago, Dale?
Yes.
Yeah. So there's significant balances. So you need to go out and encumber for those. Whoever, if a commissioner has balances in his, in his budget there, I, I implore you that you go and, and get that out of the way, because the rules of the game today is that you, you can't be holding those balances beyond three years. So the quicker you spend.
And we have made those identifications, and we have alerted commissioners, and we're going to make the appropriate expenditures quickly.
So, so having said all that, if you were to do it in a two, in a two-year, if you were to spend the 50 million, 25 apiece, then the impact on, on your rate is, is less. You get to, you get to structure your debt a little better, because it's, it's less, it's less amount that you're playing with. But part of the CIP that I guess you'll be reviewing in the upcoming weeks is to see, okay, let's say I have a $50 million CIP, or a $100 million CIP. Well, how fast can I spend that money? And why would I want to go out and borrow? Let's say if it's $100 million, why would I want to borrow $100 million now, when I can't spend it? Well, can I really, what, what do I really need out of the CIP immediately? That if I don't take care of it, I'm likely to put my employees at risk, whoever's out there, right? So, you know, let's try to see if we can come up with maybe $20 million a year, every year for five years. And that's our oncoming. We would deal with a lot of cities and counties across Texas where, basically, you go slow and easy. And what, 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 what happens there is that it kind of keeps you transparent, not only among yourselves, but with people that are behind you, in the sense that I'm spending the money that I promised I would. Here's my project. Now that I've done this, now I'll go to the next phase. And, and that keeps, you know, checks and balances a little better. So that's.
And it keeps your fund balance higher.
And it keeps your fund balance at least on watch in that, in that you're not going to take it all out from one year to the next. And, and certainly don't want to do a restructure if you don't have to. So, so that's what we have in mind. The issue here again is about the tax rate, I kept it at the same level. If you give us a penny, we can do more in terms of financing it better, having more room there. So that was basically the whole presentation of that. You know, the refunding analysis, that's for just to, you're, just to show you that you're paying right now on those bonds. You're paying 5 percent, and we think with your credit rating, we can get you at 2.17 percent. So it's just a swap of a 5 percent bond that you pay today, and you take it out with a 2.17. That's all that is. I'll stop and entertain any questions. I know this is more like a workshop. There are no actions required, so more than happy to entertain anything you may have in mind.
Commissioners?
No, it's a lot to take in.
It is, and I'm going to offer that Bobby, I know you're available. I mean, I think that it would be smart to ask them to come and, and really work with you kind of one-on-one, all of us. I know you're, Bobby, I'm putting words in your mouth, you're willing, right? Okay. And, you know, for me, the, the exercise that we just went through is a very good exercise, because it's so timely with capital improvement plan. The only thing that I think that, I think is really important to note is that we have, he's demonstrated there's an ability. So when you have literally a history of over a decade of absolutely no capital improvements, you know, to major structures, and you have a decrease in your tax rate. I mean, it's, it was more in 2009 than it is today. There's a lopsidedness that occurs. And so what I like most is that the restructuring would buy us enough savings to defer principal for enough time as to be able to try to create new revenue for, for the county. I mean, there, there's a path forward. That's what you've demonstrated. There's a path forward for major capital needs. And if you can find a way to do it softly in two parts, in two years, that looks better than maybe the, all the, the one in.
I will say too, Judge and members of the court, that rating agencies will look at you, the, once they see your capital needs, and they try to come up in their minds, how are you going to tackle those needs? They, they, they don't mind sharing with you, postponing agony sometimes is not the best strategy to, to, you know, trying to solve for funding capital needs. You've got to maintain a quality, a quality of life, and, and you have to make the, the necessary investments. But if you do it in a planning fashion and a methodical fashion, you're going to be better off. So once you have your needs identified, then let's see about what we can do with the debt model. Be a very engaging process. I mean, we have always welcomed people to, to jump in at any time, and, and the key here is that you feel comfortable, because debt, a lot of times sounds very, is a bad word in a lot of people's mouths, but, but if you do it in a very methodical way, you know, you at least are going to feel confident that you're going to spend the right way and access the debt in the right way, or the best way you can possibly do.
So you would be comfortable with us? That's what, that's my biggest thing here, is because we have so many needs, that we could structure it in a way so that we could get some of them out of the way and plan for down the road.
Yep. No question, ma'am. Yeah.
Okay. And why wouldn't we just, no matter what we do, restructure those GO 2010? Seems like if there's an ability to restructure that, to create savings, wouldn't we want to do that? Or is that?
Refinancing, there are two words. One is refinancing.
Right.
Refinancing, get the savings in. The other one is restructuring. Restructuring is, how can I shave, if I need to, how can I shave those bars on that page two, I guess, whatever that page was?
A little bit lower.
So that instead of having this camelback debt service the way it's structured, make it look more like a, a very seamless roller coaster ride. Not, not like that, but kind of just slope it a little bit better, so that the red line, the difference between the red line and the bars can be, can be more subtle, and thus give you some capacity to fund it. Because I don't know what your capital needs are going to be, and, you know, I want to really emphasize on that. I'm not going to tell you the answers, because the answers on, on the financing side can change in an instant. I'm using rates right now, interest rates, for example, that are market of three and a, three, three and an eighth or three and a quarter. Markets can rise, but we're doing the planning.
Right.
To me, I've never seen market conditions as a way of planning. But when you're in, in, in this process of playing the game of how do I fund the needs, then it becomes very active, a very active process that sometimes we want to hurry up. But I don't want to hurry, I don't want you to hurry up. I want you to do it right. And, I mean, we all want to be right.
Got it.
We all want to be quick. So again, you know, the fact that you're asking us to come down here, it's, it's just the right thing to be doing, so we can be more comfortable with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Mattis?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We really do appreciate it.
I'll see you.
Commissioners, at this time, I'll call for the presentation by the Texas Historical Commission. We're going to receive some very important and exciting information from Sharon Fleming, and it has to do with the draft feasibility study on the historic 1914 Nuasis County Courthouse. Good morning, Sharon.
Morning. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to come back and speak with you today regarding the feasibility study. In March, we promised that we would present a new feasibility study on the historic Nuasis County Courthouse and its reuse. And so I'm very proud to bring this to you. I'd like to make four opening points, briefly walk through the report, under five minutes, I promise.
Okay.
And summarize some of the recommendations in the report. So this is a preliminary draft report. It's 44 pages. It is comprehensive. However, this is a living document, and we are looking forward to your feedback. We are looking forward to information that may be provided to us by the private sector on some of the challenges and issues described in this report. So we're, we're interested in keeping an open mind. Secondly, this is both a feasibility report on the potential reuse of the Nuasis County Courthouse, and it is an action plan. So there are very specific recommendations here that we believe the county and its partners may take, that would help facilitate the redevelopment of the courthouse, and perhaps overcome some of the challenges that were in, in place during the past. Thirdly, this concept that's presented in the report, which is the adaptive reuse of the historic courthouse as a boutique hotel, is a very popular concept. It, it was not the objective of our earlier feasibility study, which focused on reuse for rental residential. We were happy to find out that the market in Corpus Christi for hotel and travel has increased significantly in the past three years. So this feasibility study builds on some of the earlier feasibility information that we provided in that first report. And then finally, I'd just like to mention why it's important to undertake this project. We're preserving an important landmark in your community, and a property that has significant historical meaning to the county. We can also enhance the downtown business district and recreational opportunities in the city, which are increasing and growing every day. And we can create tax revenue for both the city, the county, and the ISD. Projects like these make economic sense, and we have examples of projects like this all over the state. So very quickly, I'd like to just walk through what the contents of the report. It basically has three parts. The first is where the project itself is discussed, on pages eight through 18. As an architect, I was involved with putting this together, and, and we had a team. You've got floor plans, you've got gross square footage, net square footage. The proposal includes a 173-room guest suite hotel. Um, the proposal includes, um, a 173-room guest suite hotel, um, a restaurant, bar, and coffee shop. Um, the site also accommodates, um, an outdoor pool. Um, we're confident that, uh, what the historic building can accommodate this sort of development. There would be two modest-sized additions built onto the west side of the building. And, um, this has all been developed in consultation with the National Park Service and our Historic Tax Credit Program staff. So, um, we believe that this is a realistic architectural proposal. Um, you also notice that on page, um, 12, there's a table that describes the hotel's financial performance. So, um, talking about the revenue that would be obtained and operating expenses and debt service. So that's information that's important to a potential developer. Uh, the next section of the report deals with the, uh, market here in Corpus Christi for hotel. It looks at other hotel properties, um, their occupancy rates, and, uh, projects that there is a sufficient market in Corpus Christi to support this type of high-end boutique hotel. Then, um, the remaining section discusses in detail the financial feasibility. Um, we're not sugarcoating the costs here. We're estimating approximately a $68 million project. Um, but there are over seven financial incentives available to support the project. The federal historic preservation tax credit, the state historic preservation tax credit. We've listed, um, the Texas PACE program, which is available for, um, sustainable projects, tax increment reinvestment zone financing, new market tax credits. Uh, we have some federal funding available through the National Park Service for Hurricane Harvey historic properties. And finally, um, opportunity zone, which is a new financial incentive. And, um, you know, several of these had just come online in 2016 and, uh, several more have come online since we began this discussion about a year or so ago. So, um, so this is very exciting. Um, at the back of the report, we have, uh, the recommendations that we've developed. Um, we think that these are key strategic items that need to be addressed so that this project can be presented as a feasible opportunity to a potential developer. Um, first of all, we have a structural assessment and, uh, that assessment has tentative funding through the National Park Service. Um, that would ensure that a developer has some confidence that the building, um, is repairable and what the methodology would be for doing that. Um, secondly, we're recommending, um, that a plan for temporary repairs to the building, uh, we call that mothballing, um, essentially making sure that there's no further damage, um, that a plan for that work be, uh, prepared. And that's also, uh, funded through the National Park Service, uh, grant. And, and we are still, um, waiting for approval from that, on that. Um, but those temporary repairs need to be undertaken and need to be undertaken soon. Um, a third item we have is, uh, discussing the transfer of the right-of-way for, for the removal of the Harbor Bridge. And if that property could be attached to the ho, the, um, the courthouse property, that would represent a, a really benefit to a potential developer. Um, three issues that are somewhat under the purview of the city have to do with, um, the relocation of Fire Station Number One. Uh, the second is, uh, making available the parking in front of the building um, as, as a lease opportunity for the developer. And then finally, um, making a firm commitment on the tax increment reinvestment zone funding, uh, which they did offer to, to the previous party. And then the last two recommendations really could be combined into one, but it's simply, um, that we think that the request for proposals, uh, can be improved. Uh, we think that having some, uh, confidence in these issues and, uh, presenting them in the proposal, uh, will give the developers a higher level of interest in the project and more confidence when they do submit a proposal. So I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Commissioners?
I have, um, just a question I'll pose to you and also to, to the court. So in your introduction on page four, uh, I think it pretty, gives a pretty good, uh, indication, summary of what has taken place so that anyone not familiar with, with, um, the history of the courthouse, uh, would have a good understanding of what has taken place, especially most recently, uh, within the past two to three years as far as development, potential development and falling through. Um, it may be just nuanced, but for me, I have a concern where it says that, um, when we're talking about the deal in the middle paragraph of the introduction, required payment of property back taxes, the developer's payment was delayed and the county terminated their agreement. That is correct. But it was delayed after multiple attempts to collect payments. I really think that's important to put that in there because I believe that's the spirit of what happened, Judge. Um, it wasn't that was just one try and then we said, okay, let's, let's just get rid of it. Let's just, just kill this deal because there was multiple tries. The, the, the financial part of this organization, um, were contacted and just never reply and, and delays and promises of payment and it never happened. So that is just a very small part. Once again, my regulation, recollection of what happened. But I, I just feel that this document needs to be as accurate to what took place as possible. I think everything else is, I really didn't find many other questions, maybe some more minor stuff. But that, that, if that could be added in, I think that would be so important.
Certainly do that.
That was not our intent, was just, we tried, if I read it not knowing, I'd say, okay, it was delayed and then the county said, forget it. No, it was multiple times over many months that after that pin, that, that signing was done here in early 2018, that nothing happened, uh, it, there were, there were attempts. And then once we finally realized that we weren't gonna get the money, that's when we decided to terminate, uh, the agreement. So, uh, that'd be my concern, uh, for any future court that hopefully, I believe we're gonna, we're gonna have some resolution to this. But, um, for anyone reviewing this in the future, uh, will understand why that happened.
I agree with you, John. I think that's important because there were so many attempts to get it.
We can wordsmith and, and send you an edit on that.
Very good. We'd be happy to-
We can do that. Um, are there anything? Yes, Commissioner?
You know, before all this and probably before 18, we did a, um, a feasibility study. I think, did you all see that? Have you all seen that one?
We prepared a feasibility-
No, before that. We had engineers go in there-
Oh, structural, yes.
Structural engineering evaluation.
Did you all see that?
Yes.
So what makes it better now than what they recommended before?
So, um, what's been proposed and the grant application that was received from the county, um, is a structural evaluation, uh, that would be prepared based on the current conditions of the building, um, taking into account that, um, that the code that the previous engineer felt had to be met is not required. There are numerous aspects of the building that are grandfathered in that, um-
Let me just stop right there.
Yeah.
This is not required. So if it, they showed that it was bad and it was really bad and we don't, and there's no requirement for that, we're gonna proceed with it and even though it's bad? Somebody's telling us that it's bad, it's not gonna, and, and there's a danger of it collapsing at one point. I mean, I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're comparing both, uh, assessments, you know, and comparing what, what is there and making sure that we're not gonna go over one, take one over the other one if we're not real sure that that building is really structured and sound structured, uh, you know, to, to be used. I mean, are we, are we talking about gutting the whole thing out and putting all new pipes? I, I don't know, I don't know what, how far are we going with this building right here?
Most of the systems in the building, the plumbing, mechanical, and electrical systems do require replacement. Um, we have a strong degree of confidence that the, the structural capacity of the building is very sound. Um, the building was built far beyond what codes would require in this day. And, um, there are certain structural systems that are very uncommon that were used in construction of the building. And we have an engineer who, um, well, we have experience with engineers who, um, are familiar with those kinds of historic building systems and how they perform long-term.
So you have an engineer telling you it's okay?
Well, the evaluation will tell you whether the building is okay.
So this study hasn't, the money that we are awaiting, um, is gonna be used to hire a structural, uh, engineer to go in. But this time, this person will have a historical preservation knowledge and will be a specialist for these types of historic buildings. So the idea is, is not that the other, and they will use that assessment that was done before. I know what your concern is, but I think that what, what, what the Historical Commission has revealed with their own assessment, and they are experts, having redone historic buildings all over, is that, that's correct, that the engineering assessment was done before, was done with looking at it from a critical eye of thinking, well, we're going to need this to be up to code for 20, whenever that was done, 2016, 2015. And what their Historical Commission's saying is they did not look at it with the right lenses because some of those codes, it's not that it's about a safety matter. It's just about a, how much money it would cost, you know, to be able to institute whatever those codes are.
Judge, I would, I would, I really would want a critical eye and a safety consideration, you know?
No, of course. But what I'm saying is, is they were not experts. The people we're gonna hire are gonna be experts in historical preservation. And that is the concern, is that the structural assessment that was done was not done looking with the right lenses.
Well, may I just add to, the proposed evaluation that, um, will be coming to the county includes much more testing than was included in the previous report. Um, so it is an extremely comprehensive evaluation. It's, um, it's not meant to be anything that doesn't fully investigate, um, the condition and, and fully take into account all the previous structural analyses that have been done.
It's all part of the 68 million.
No, the 68, the what she's talking about, we're actually gonna, he wants to know about, we, all the feasibility, all they've done so far is what you have before you, which is an economic study. But what we're about to do is what you want to do, which is the, the second part is coming, which is the structural. We haven't done that yet and we don't have that report.
Who would pay for that?
We've got the grant.
The whole amount?
Uh, there's an estimate and the grant award is-
Based on the estimate.
Based on the estimate.
Of course, it has not been awarded because it has to go through an RFP process. But I guess, to some extent, we know what those, uh, assessments cost and that was taken into consideration with the dollar amount that was awarded.
It's over $150,000 in grant funding that's been provided for that study.
And we're anxiously awaiting it. I mean, we're, the minute we get it, we'll be able to move forward.
I, I, I think it's a really good study and I'm so glad we did it. Um, I don't think we're saying that the engineers that did the structural before were not good engineers. They were. But yours is gonna be a more in-depth with historical engineers that have done this and they do it all the time. Um, we can either sit here for seven years and wait to tear it down and save some money to tear it down or do something and be proactive. And I think that's what we're doing. So I'm looking forward to us moving forward to the rest of it and get going.
And for the first time, for the first time in a long time, we actually have a blueprint as if we were looking at it from the developer's side. We've always looked at it from an RFP, we want to sell this side with only one parameter, a price. Now, for the first time, we can approach a developer and we've almost done the vetting for them. I'm certain that any developer would do their own vetting. But this is an incredible template because it's so detailed in budget. It's got design floor plans. Um, it has really the breakdown of tax incentives that indicate that 50% of the cost estimate would be deferred by tax incentives. So really, the overall cost is approximately 29 million. I think that's about right from my memory, um, which is an outstanding ratio as far as tax incentives go to overall cost. In addition, I think it gives us a template to go to the city and ask our partners at the city if they wish to entertain the idea of making this package much more solid. Your recommendations, some of which are already being, you know, talked about and implemented here, like a better RFP process. I think our Director of Procurement is sitting here listening, but I know he's already mentioned that himself, that he recognizes that the procurement process could be enhanced. So that part of it is gonna be welcome. But I think what we have that, that's different, because I think that's what Commissioner Gonzalez is saying, what makes it so different today? And what makes it different in my eyes, after reading the study, is that we actually now need to solidify A, B, C, and D that are not in the county's control, but were absolutely vital to putting together a package. Once we can take this to the city, I will be very interested to see if they would join our efforts. And, um, if they do, that makes for a much better RFP and a much better package.
That was gonna be my next question about the city, uh, the school district. Everybody's gonna benefit from this, should have a part in this somehow, right? And it's not that I don't want, uh, this project, don't take me wrong. I mean, this is a great project and we need something like this. Uh, I'm just, you know, you heard, the reporter just had, before you come up here, we had another reporter on financial stuff, you know? So we, we're, we're in a bind right now, we're for financial. And that's what my concern is too, you see? So, so, but as far as this project, it's great. I mean, I, you know, if we can get somebody else to pay for it, it's even better, you know, so.
So let me, let me ask just to help remind myself and anyone else watching or paying attention. So the cost for this study, is it Nuasis County? Is it gonna come out of Nuasis County?
Which study now? The one you're looking at?
The structural.
The structural, we, we, uh, received a grant.
Right, so it's a grant. It's not gonna come from-
That's correct.
And can we tear this down today?
No, sir.
Can't. Despite what everyone's saying, we can't. So in the meantime, we're gonna put a lot of, continue to put a lot of hard effort and time into this, money that's coming in from a grant. And we have to wait at least till, what, another seven years or so to tear it down, even if that's what we wanted, or at least to the next legislative session to get permission, which we know will be an uphill battle that's never happened before. But at least it's an option, right? So can we tear it down today? No. So if people are frustrated, wondering why we can't do that or why we don't do that today, that's one of the main reasons why is because we can't. Now, um, I, I saw somewhere, I read somewhere, well, what if we decided to tear it down anyway? What can you all do? Worst-case scenario, what could, what could the Texas Historical Commission do to us? If we just decided, you know what, next month, we're gonna put a wrecking ball to it? I mean, how could we be stopped by doing that?
It was my hope today to present all the reasons why this building should be preserved-
I understand, but I want, I think there's been people in the community that have, have, have asked why, you know, what, what's to stop us? I mean, who, I mean, is it something against the law? I guess maybe I should be asking our county attorney. Is it because of that covenant that we have? Is that what prevents us?
From, from what?
Remind us just to tear down the courthouse?
That's correct. That's correct.
So we would be violating our agreement or, or the rules in place?
Yes, we would be agreement and, uh, pretty much you would be, pretty much having to pay everything back that you have received.
So we pay back in addition to all that? Okay. Which was how much again?
I think it was, uh, 2 million.
So if we want a quick fix, it's gonna still cost us $2 million to do. And so I, I, Judge, for me, I think it's, we're kind of in this time of just waiting anyway, at least to the next session at the earliest, that we continue just to move forward and use money that's not coming from the taxpayers and, and try, try to see how to do this right. And like you said, put it to where a developer would want to purchase this property and make something happen of it rather than just trying to get it off our hands for a price tag.
That's correct. And there's only one recommendation that I want to end with that was of interest to me because I do want some legal, uh, counseling on it. And, uh, can we bring up the recommendations again? It basically has to do with the price tag. Uh, it's the Historical Commission's recommendation that we just simply seek that the tax repayment, which by law, we cannot waive. But as you know, we have an appraisal on the property. And therefore, the appraisal was always a part of the RFP and it was always my understanding that the county has an obligation to receive, that she's nodding, yeah. So that's, I just wanted the Historical Commission to know that that piece of it is trickier for- for the county because of the way the law is standing. But what I did want to ask the county attorney and also commissioners to think about is whether or not we could still accept the, let's say, we have an appraisal for eight-hundred thousand dollars, but we could be more creative about the acceptance of that portion. So we could say, and we defer that over time, that payment upon certificate of occupancy, you know, and you can pay it over time for the next ten years. And of course, we could have a contract that allowed for the deferment of that payment, and therefore, do what the Historical Commission really wants to entice the developer, but still stay within the boundaries of our legal abilities. And so that might be something that I might rework and reword with you as well to make sure that the law, you know, is abided by. What do you think about that?
Yeah, one of the things that we did look at is obviously what is considered a purchase price. And what we were doing is basically allowing whatever the proposer was suggesting in the rehabilitation of the building, and you would take that into consideration of the appraisal district, I mean, the appraisal value. So in other words, we're, we're not.
To reduce.
Exactly, exactly. So offset. So that's, that was one thing. What happened, and I do want to clarify, what happened at this last RFP process is all RFPs have, have, basically, whatever the county wants is stayed out in specifications. What happened in this last RFP is that the court didn't want to take a stand. They didn't want to take a stand as far as rehabilitation or to sell it. So the, the court decided, let's do both. So that's why the specifications were a little bit broader, where you accepted all proposals. But in this situation, hopefully, the court will make a decision that rehabilitation is the way to go, and that, that makes it better in terms of the RFP process.
Okay, thank you. I think that's a good synopsis there. Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you, Sharon, and I do want you to know that the court, that I sent a, a letter to our congressman and just let him know that the National Park Service, you know, through this federal granting opportunity has, you know, has this, these monies, and Texas Historical Commission had already made this award, you know, just to get him in the fold. And they were very excited for us and very receptive. So just want you to know, we're keeping up with our federal partners and letting them know that in case they happen to wander over to National Park and say, is that check coming anytime soon? Does that go before a board, or does it have to be just approved by, is it a ministerial act or is it a board act?
We have, we don't really have further information.
We don't know. Okay, and that's why I thought it'd be a good idea just to let him know, because time is of the essence, you know? I think we, we all want to know about the structural, so. Okay, thank you so much.
We're working with you on that.
Likewise. All right, we're going to head into number three, and I saw Johnny at the back, thank you for being patient. And Johnny Hip, the Director of the Hospital District, will come forward. He's going to give us an update on matters related to historic, I mean, listen to me, historic, hospital. It's historic over there too, Johnny, hospital district funded programs.
Real historic.
And by the way, thank you all, Historical Commission, for, for being in the audience today, and, and the Downtown Management District. I didn't get to acknowledge, but we thank you for your presence.
Judge, did you want to introduce this item, or do you want me?
Sure, sure, I'm going to introduce it briefly and then you just, as I, I can't resist, take it away, Johnny. So basically, this is a very, I, I have to say, I don't know if you felt this way, but after all the passion and all of the conversations you've had, you and I have had since January, early January, it almost felt uneventful for such a momentous occasion that occurred yesterday at the Hospital District Board meeting. I just, I don't know what I was expecting, but I was hoping for a little confetti. It was such a big deal to me personally because I think it's such a major event for Nuasis County. And Commissioners, yesterday, the Hospital District Board authorized Executive Director Hip to execute two contracts, one with a group called Be Healthy out of San Antonio, Texas. They will do a deep dive and assessment into the jail diversion program that currently exists in hopes that it might be strengthened. In addition, Hospital District Board separately introduced, I mean, authorized Johnny Hip to execute a document with the Meadows Mental Health Policy Institute in order to do a comprehensive behavioral health assessment for Nuasis County. I cannot be, I'm really just truly over the moon about both of these actions. You will care and want to know that the Hospital District is paying for these items. The cost and proposals, I think, have been provided to you. If they haven't, Tyner, I'm going to ask that they please be provided. Again, this was just done yesterday afternoon, Commissioners, so I'm not even sure if Johnny's actually had a chance to execute them. But with that, I'll let that be my intro.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I think you all, as the judge said, have had this item on your agenda previously, and so this is a follow-on to the judge's introduction this morning, and you all have it on your agenda a couple of weeks ago. As the judge mentioned, the Hospital District Board authorized me to enter into two agreements, contracts, to do the things the judge mentioned. The jail diversion program, just as a little bit of background, is about a year old now. We started this back in July of last year. It's a, and this is not negative, it's a homegrown program. It's, it's done several things that are positive. I think that there have been questions, both by my board and by you all, when the folks from M H I D have offered their reports. And so the Hospital District and the county both have a joint interest in making sure that the jail diversion program is doing everything it can. The county's interest in it arises from your responsibility to operate the jail, and you all certainly have an interest in making sure that folks don't, that have an opportunity to not be in the jail and diverted from there. We have programs and stuff in place to do that. The end effect of that is it keeps your jail population down, gets these people in the right arena to be dealt with. And so since that program is relatively new, the county has an interest in making sure it's doing everything that it can do to achieve the goals the county has. The Hospital District's goal is to make sure that the money we're putting into the program is best spent on those programs and doing everything that is intended to be achieved. So having a review of the jail diversion and related programs is not negative in any way. It's an opportunity to step in and have a look at the program by folks who do, who have done these programs, that are best known for doing them in Texas, but also across the United States. The two principals in the group that the judge mentioned are Leon Evans and Carla Ramirez. They're both out of San Antonio, their group has done a phenomenal job in San Antonio with these programs. And so we, we're going to have the opportunity for them to come in and take a look at our program. With regard to the other program, the Community Mental Health Needs Assessment, the Hospital District Board, back on June the sixth, authorized seeking proposals for having a county-wide assessment. And so as the, as the judge mentioned, we, we collaborated on who is best situated to do that and doing it under a professional services agreement. And the Meadows Foundation out of Dallas have done many of these projects in Texas and also across the U.S. Their project is a little more long-term, it's, it's about a year, but they do a deep dive in all the aspects of looking at the community of mental health needs of the county. There has never been a mental health needs assessment of what's needed in Nuasis County. There are several providers who provide pieces of the mental health puzzle that need to be addressed, but there are gaps in those services. Also, the, the comprehensive mental health assessment will need to involve all the providers in the community, and that's where the judge's bully pulpit, if you will, comes into play because she can leverage, if you will, getting everyone involved in this because it is truly a, a community-wide approach and a community need that needs to be addressed. So I'm happy to just reiterate what the judge has said, is that the, the board authorized me to go ahead and enter into those agreements. We arrived at those providers, both as a professional services and on consultation with the judge's office. We conducted interviews with them, spoke with people who've done work with them in the past, and we're confident that both groups will be able to deliver the things we're asking them to.
Meadows Foundation, the one in San Antonio?
Dallas.
Dallas.
Isn't the one also in San Antonio or somewhere in between here and Dallas? Does residential, do they have residential?
No, no, they, you're, I know what you're thinking of, and that is also called the Meadows, but this one is the Policy Institute out of Dallas. Yeah.
So it's all?
It's all, so basic, no.
Treatment services?
No, they don't do treatment services. But Leon and Carla Ramirez's group, what they do, they basically created and saw it all the way through implementation to the Restoration Center in Bear County, which it has all kinds of services. I think that's what you're thinking of. Yeah, you're right. That's, those are all the services you're thinking of. And I know I've been a royal pain on this, and I want you to know, it was worth every single moment for me. Thank you so much for, for seeing this through and for proving everybody wrong. We've done this in record time, in my opinion. I think that we're, there are huge buckets of dollars, both federal and state, to go after. And not just state of Texas, I mean, state foundational money on behavioral health, but none of that was ever going to be possible without the assessment and the data. In addition, the opioid litigation that we're currently involved in is part and parcel of this assessment. And I'm going to ask, in fact, I was just writing it down to Tyner, that one of the things that has already come from talking to these groups is the need to establish a Nuasis County opioid task force. This is an absolute must. It's going to be important, not only for the assessment, to have the right electeds to institute policy, once they bring us deliverables, but just in general, to be able to address this very, it's just one slice of the overall mental health need, but it's already doing its work. I think the only thing we should mention to the court, Johnny, is that within sixty days, we should have one small deliverable, but it's going to be an important one. And so I think we'll invite you back, go ahead and calendar, you know, whatever seventy-five days looks like, we'll have time to review it. But we are, these deliverables are very important. We were very tough on them about timeline. And so there'll be deliverables between sixty days and the next nine months. So you will see an agenda item almost every month. This is, this is an absolute crisis in our community on opioids, and in my opinion, it's a crisis because we don't have enough mental health services. And, and as you said, all our stakeholders, everybody is going to be involved. And I know the sheriff supports this effort, and I'm really, I think he had to leave, but Deputy, you'll forward it, that we're real grateful to have law enforcement back us up. But I'm not going to stop with the county, we need the city to also, and I just need to have that entree to them. That's what this assessment will give us. So thank you. Are there any other questions? It was presentation only, no actions required at this time.
I just have one rec.
One recommendation.
I think eventually we have to look at residential, you know?
Yes.
Somehow because.
Housing.
Housing, but only, no residential for treatment because of the jail population also, and also the Restoration Center. After a certain time, they can't hold them anymore, and I don't know how long they can. So I think it's very important, on the road, we have to look in residential, you know?
I agree. I think phase, one of the phases addresses housing and, I can't remember what number it is, but.
I, I think Commissioner, the, the review that the Ramirez-Evans group are going to do is a fairly comprehensive one, and it'll take in all those things. And I was just going to add, just before I step back, is that the, part of the Canales, I mean, the Ramirez-Evans group's review is going to involve whether a Restoration Center warrant, is warranted here, and so they're certainly going to be looking at that.
I can tell you it is right now.
I know. So much of what we want to hear, we kind of know instinctually, but the nice thing is that for the grants, they need to have an independent authority. And I also want everyone to know that M H I D was also present yesterday, as was the two major hospital health providers, Krista Spawn and Jay Woodall from HSA, and I mean, we really have tremendous early support on this effort. It's not us dictating, it's us collaborating. It's very exciting. Like I said, I left there and I was like, oh my God, what did we just do? This is unbelievable, and nobody knows about it. So let's let them get their work done, and then within seventy days, I think we need to have a big, you know, community, we need to have a telling of this, we need to communicate.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you so much. And now, Mary Lee, you're up, you're next, and this is also a very important discussion. We're going to receive a presentation on the personal bond office, it's authorized by the new legislation, Article seventeen point forty-two, the Code Criminal Procedure.
Before she gets started, I just wanted to follow up on that.
Yes.
Yes, I do have language in that contract that basically says if we terminate the contract and the crop is, is, they had just put.
Planted.
Yeah, we, we paid for that.
That's good. That's great. Good, good contract.
Before, before I, I lose some steam here, since I seem to be pushing forward programs that you all are receptive to. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you this morning. I've been sitting here listening to spending money, and I'd like to put forth an opportunity for us to generate some revenue based on some additional responsibilities that you can give my department. And so, Tyner, you're going to help me out with this. I've only been back with the county for four years, and about four years ago, we ran into a significant issue with our jail overcrowding. So our district courts decided that they were going to implement a mandatory personal bond for third-degree and state jail felonies. Most of our misdemeanors, except for family violence and DWI cases, are released on PR bonds. I've been around a long time, going back to, I'm, actually, I'm a relic from the old courthouse. Back in my day, it was very, very rare that PR bonds were issued on felonies. Now it's common. But when I came back in four years ago, it occurred to me, no one was ever tracking what was going on with those people who got on a PR bond. They'd sign a contract with the county saying, I promise to come back, and if I don't come back, I will pay you X amount of money. There was no follow-up, there was no opportunity to determine whether or not their addresses were correct. They just got out and later they'd be summoned. So what's going on right now, we have a very hard-working magistrate department and a very hard-working risk assessment program. They make recommendations to our judges who approve bonds. As I say, many of those are PR bonds, and when the PR bond people get out, out they go. It could take six months, it could take ten months, it could take twenty months for their cases to be filed. We've found that these individuals are incredibly mobile, and because there's, there was no prior tracking mechanism, they'd move and we'd mail a notice. Before you'd know it, there'd be a failure to appear, there'd be a warrant for their arrest, they'd go back into jail, our jail population would go up, and witnesses would get lost, there would be no opportunity for us to go forward in actually maintaining a tracking mechanism for our PR bonds. So what I'm recommending is that you all give me the authority to expand the duties of my office, where I have my two part-time temporary people become full-time people who not only expand this program, it accomplishes three very important things. It maintains a reduction in our jail population, our CGIS numbers are improved, because the faster we can get them here, the faster we can dispose of their cases, and ultimately, we generate revenue. Because under seventeen forty-two of the Code Criminal Procedure, you have the authority to establish an office that allows the county to assess a fee. I have, I'm going to defer the subtleties of this to the county attorney's office and to Dale, but currently, there is a budget proposal out there, and if we'll go to the second or the third slide, we had, and I captured data only from January of eighteen through March of nineteen, because that's where I was, I was limited. We had eighteen thousand three hundred and ninety-two bonds issued. Of those, thirty-four percent were PR bonds. If we had been able to collect this fee, go into the next screen, that would have been a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that we could have generated. Now, we're not going to have every single person show up and pay their, their fee, we know this. But if we have a percentage of them, some money is better than no money. So basically, what I'm asking you all to consider, what we're doing right now is we're mailing out postcards, we're taking phone calls every day from people who get out on bonds, updating their demographics, making sure their addresses are correct. We do this on a continual basis until their cases are assigned to a court. So we're not, we're, we're not losing them to the community, because as I say, they're very mobile. Some folks don't want to be found. But at least if we're reaching out to them, giving them an opportunity to update their information, we can get more of them here than we would before. So what we're looking at doing is basically, as I say, if we're allowed to expand the duties of my office by picking up this article, this provision under seventeen forty-two, we'd like to hit the trifecta, which again, is to keep jail population down, improves up, improve. the trifecta, which again, is to keep jail population down, improves, improve our C G I S numbers, and by giving my staff the ability to perform some of the clerical functions that the magistrate department currently does, we can also appoint attorneys to those who are qualified. The faster they get an attorney, the faster the disposition for their cases. Some of which would include pre-f, pre-trial diversion, before they even get to the indictment process, or to the information stage. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them. I was trying to be brief, because there are other people who have presentations.
I'll entertain questions.
Well, rarely do we get anyone to come, come up here that wants to increase revenue, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
My question's this, what's it going to cost the county for two full-time employees? I know they're part-time now, but what's it going to cost?
Actually, that's in our budget packet, Dale. Could we get a reference for her on that, either now or later?
Right now, we, we, we have them as, as temporary employees. Temporary employees, right now, we have a, have a $65,000 budget for temporary. We're, we're, we're wanting to move them not to full-time position, but full-time, part-time, which means no more than 30 hours a week.
Okay, so-
Or 30 hours, 30 hours, or a pay period. So it's, it's not a full-time position, it's a part-time position, but as a, a full-time employee, instead of being a temporary employee. So what does that mean? That would mean, right now, we would, we would reduce the temporary budget that she has of 65, and it would increase, it would close to about 85 to 90, so add another $20,000 to the, to the budget.
For both?
For both, yes.
Increase 20,000 for both.
Around 20, yes, yes.
Okay.
So her, under her method, she would only have to produce a third of the people paying the fees to more than compensate those two people.
Correct.
And the, and the rest would be, would be revenue that could be allocated elsewhere.
Gee, gee, right. Yes, ma'am.
One of the requirements conditioned upon setting a fee is that the personal bond office would have to make a recommendation. So the persons that she's talking about are just clerical, they're, they would not have that experience to actually recommend a bond. But I can try to help and try to get it, you know, whereby we are able to assess that bond, or make that recommendation. Right now, we have an inter-local agreement with C S E D for those two employees that actually do give a recommendation to the magistrate court with regard to some of the felonies. So, but they're not our employees, they're obviously with the C S E D. Those are the type of individuals that need that experience to be able to give that recommendation. So perhaps maybe what we can work on is have some job description whereby those employees that she wants to make full-time would have that experience and could make that recommendation. Once they can make that recommendation, you can assess that, that fee.
And also, Dale has advised me that funding for risk assessment for the upcoming budget year may go to my department, that may cover part of our umbrella circumstances that need to be resolved. Also, I'm told possibly the magistrate employees may be coming under my budget as well. So I think we can work toward making the requisite changes that would allow 1742 to apply to the bond fee being assessed. I just wanted to put the opportunity out there for you all to consider it, and like I said, I have sta, I have staff on board right now that are well-versed in Odyssey, they are enthused about this project, they, they want to make a difference, and, and they understand the critical nature of not only our C G I S compliance, but our jail population standards.
But to address Lauta's concern, you would work with whoever you needed to, in other words, all these-
I'll do whatever's necessary.
Right. Because I think her concern is, is that the fee can only be assessed by the person that is going to be trained or qualified, and so my question is, who would that be then in your office?
Well, I, I believe that between the risk assessment folks, the magistrate folks, and my office-
Right. So that's how I see it, too. I see risk assessment, remember, risk assessment would do the identifying and making the recommendation. All these two employees would be doing was doing the ministerial work of getting it done. I just want to make sure, I don't know if we have to expand the job duties, because the people that she's going to hire are not the people that are going to make the PR bond decision. That is risk assessment, and those are officers. So-
But I think you must keep the same people she has.
Yes, they're, they're experienced in, in what's already going forward, so yes, we'd like to, we'd like to convert them from temporary, part-time to permanent.
Correct. But they're still not going to be the ones making the PR decision. I just want to make sure, there's not an issue with that, in my mind. It's coming from either the magistrate herself, in this case, or-
And sometimes it even comes from the JP's office, who are making-
Correct.
As well.
Okay, yeah.
And next question was going to be, do y'all magistrate on weekends?
There are magistrates on duty, yes, seven days a week.
And there's risk assessers seven days a week.
Every time on Mondays, I see a lot of them, says magistrate, it's just a big number on there. Is those numbers because of the weekend, or, because I asked the sheriff the day, do y'all have magistrate, weekend magistrate?
And they do, sir.
They do?
Yes, sir. They're on, they're on duty seven days a week.
Okay. Because I was going to say, you know, even the JP's can magistrate too, you know, we used to rote, we used to rotate.
And they're also magistrating at the city detention center.
I'm sorry?
They're also magistrating at the city detention center.
The JP's?
Employees at this, at the city-
No, but I'm saying, JP's can also be magistrate, weekend magistrate, because we used to do, we used to rotate.
Yes, sir.
Remember a lot of, we used to do the JP's, or one weekend a month?
Our problem is the release, not the, not the magistration.
Well, you release magistrate.
But maybe under the inter-local, maybe we can expand it from two officers to three.
Well, that's always-
And that one ident, you know, basically, perhaps working under, with, with the person, if you establish the personal bond office, and, and that, I mean, I think once we do that, and once that person does make that recommendation to the magistrates, then you can assess it.
And I've also had extensive conversations with Mr. Shoal, the director of-
Probation.
He supports this a high extent. He's even said that if it got to a point where there was a collection of, of fees, that their staff could, could administer that duty at their facility as well.
So I think what, what, what I'm hearing is that we've received a very good presentation that seems like it not only makes logical sense, but there's actually two, three really good reasons to establish this policy. Can we see in an upcoming August agenda, the opportunity, Tyner, to make this establishment? And then Dale, could you, could you suggest a protocol on the collection of fee from the auditor's perspective, and?
Yes, we would also, as, as Laura was saying, there was an inter-local agreement with, with us and adult probation on the risk assessment, however, that was for a grant, and the grant's expired. So I don't know, we need a new-
I think we do. I think-
Judge, I've already started the process for a new inter-local, it will begin October 1. I recommend we begin all this October 1.
And the, and the, and the financing for this will have to be part of our budget discussions, we've got to come up with-
Correct.
Because we're not paying for this at the moment.
Is that, is that acceptable on the, on the timeframe?
Certainly acceptable.
Okay, so then, you understand that all the bullet points we need, we need the inter-local. I'm just saying, from the inner office point of view, I would say, don't, let's just give her the template of how we would want to collect the fees, and then, and then we'll make it reflective of the budget.
And we've already designed forms in Odyssey that we could distribute to the defendants when they come to us.
That's great.
We've already talked about the forms for applications for attorneys.
That's great.
We're doing with magistrate for meeting the federal guidelines, so we're pushing forward internally-
Right.
Before, before authorization.
Right. And I'd love to do a backflip on the C G I S thing, just on that, because the C G I S is probably our most critical. I'm still unhappy that we are not higher than, I mean, we have met our goal by August 1, for 91%, we're at 91%, but that means there's still 9%. And quite frankly, we're already now working on the next five-year cycle, and we're behind. So I think this really helps alleviate one of the concerns I had with C G I S numbers. So that's good, too. Okay, great. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
But just to, to let you know, her staff is really important, because it does help with the reduction of the overcrowdedness. I mean, they get them back into court, so there's no issuance of a warrant.
Agreed, agreed. So important.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move along to the American Conservation Experience. I know they're here with Scott Cross, welcome. You're here to talk to us about habitat conservation and preservation efforts.
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome.
Thank you. This is Dan.
Hi, Dan.
Dan heads up the American Conservation Experience, which is a subsidiary of AmeriCorps. I think I got that right, you'll explain that. Anyhow, and so Dan was look, has been doing some habitat restoration, and basically, a lot of what he's been doing for us is invasive species control with, with plants and-
Brazilian pepper.
Yeah.
Pepper.
And so he's been doing a lot of work for us at Packard Channel Nature Park, and over at, on the Clayburg property. And we pointed some of that out in our last presentation. Anyhow, and so Dan came to me recently, and he's like, you know, how can I get the word out better about what we can do for all your precincts, and, and the county in general? And so I said, this would be a great platform, for him to come and explain to you what he does and what they do, and it's, and they do a lot more than just invasive species control. I mean, they can do trails, they can build boardwalks, they can do all kinds of stuff. And so it's a really neat program. I'll stop there and let you tell them.
And tell us how you're funded.
Uh, well, uh-
Right here. All right. That way everybody can hear you.
Well, we're funded through a number of different funding sources, a lot of it's grant-funded. AmeriCorps funds some of it also, but the majority of our funding comes through contracts through federal land management agencies.
Right.
And so our relation with AmeriCorps is through a federal government agency called CNCS, the Corporation for National and Community Service. They're the, they're the headliners of AmeriCorps. They provide us, the AmeriCorps interns that we put through our program, we run them through a pretty robust training process, and we run invasive species strike teams throughout Texas and Oklahoma. We have partners with National Park Service, U S Fish and Wildlife, Forest Service, we've done a lot of work with the city of Port Aransas, Oasis County Coastal Parks, nonprofit, and other land management agencies. Yeah, and-
That's great.
Yeah, and so I just wanted to say thank you guys for giving the green light to, you know, provide us the opportunity to-
So you, you would, you would contend that maybe there's some work habitat restoration-wise, or basically a deletion of some of these invasive species in our different precincts? So for example, I'm going to just take Commissioner Modis's precinct, you're interested in working with him to see what he, what, what areas you might be able to, to work on?
Well, invasive, invasive plants, next to our shoreline resiliency for extreme weather events, our number one threat to the ecology and our public lands is invasive plants. So just about anywhere you go, we're going to have habitat fragmentation due to invasive plants. The war has been lost with invasive plants, but what we can do is work together and create these islands of native landscapes, so that the animals and taxpayers, hunters, fishers, whoever, people that enjoy our public lands can enjoy it in its native state. Because at the rate that, I hate to say it, the invasion is going, a lot of our landscape will be non-native.
Wow.
And we've worked with Oasis County Coastal Parks since we opened the doors to our office in 2017, and we have removed all mature seed-producing invasive Brazilian pepper tree. And we're monitoring the areas and keeping track of anything that comes back. But yeah, we are working with other land management agencies as well.
Great, great. Well, I just encourage you to work with our inland parks with Edward, and Edward, do you want to make a comment? You, do you have any invasive species you'd like to get rid of, sir?
Actually, they have worked for us.
Good.
We've worked with Commissioner Bosch, she bought our crew lunch that one day, and-
Awesome.
What we're getting out of it, Judge, is in Commissioner Modis's areas, that we have some parks that are heavily underbrushed, and their recommendations to us, we're trying to follow as far as the, I forget what the correct terminology, so that we can reduce fire hazards, is one of the things that they brought to us.
We got, we got water in our creeks, too, you know?
Water in our creeks.
Yeah. That's great. Well, we're glad to kind of create some awareness. I certainly didn't have the awareness. I mean, I've been working with Brazilian pepper tree through the coastal basin estuaries, which is always, you know, that's like, we know how terrible those trees can be and destructive, and so I just like the idea that we're spreading the love a little bit around, and once you maybe educate inland parks, and we can be better, you know, we can notice something that could be a threat, you know, and then maybe call you, and, and try to be proactive with you, rather than you identifying later for us, gosh, you're already lost habitat here.
Absolutely. And, you know, we've been in contact with Scott and his environmental division, and we've got a lot of other nonprofits that we work with, where we keep track of that, and just the spread of the invasion of Brazilian pepper tree, specifically in Flower Bluff and on the island.
Good.
And yeah, we've just, we've, we've actually made some pretty breakthrough efforts in monitoring, but also the treatment and a long-term control of Brazilian pepper. Just in the past 10 years, the Brazilian pepper tree invasion has expanded exponentially. And-
I'm wondering if you might bring us like a big picture of it, and, you know, we're talking about doing some cool communication things around the county and different county buildings with mon, you know, video-type things. It might be worth your while to just give us like three bullet points, you know? This is, this tree is not good, because, you know, if you'd like to call us or get rid of it, or, you know, do something proactive like that, I think we could do some promotion.
That'd be fantastic.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Okay, super. Well, we appreciate your efforts. Thanks, Scott, for bringing them today.
Hey, and thank you for what you did at Hilltop, y'all did a great job. Most people don't think about what you're talking about here today, they just don't.
Well, no, and, you know, you know-
And it sounds pretty Brazilian pepper tree.
It is.
But it's, it's, it really is a bad species.
And the crazy story, I don't want to take up too much of y'all's time, but it was brought here from Brazil, there's two species that were brought here from Brazil, they have really pretty berries, they're edible, and they have hybridized and created the Brazilian pepper tree that we all know today, which is a very resilient and invasive Brazilian pepper tree. It's saltwater tolerant, it's resistant to a lot of pesticides, it grows at a very alarming rate. The rate of climate change has only helped it invade even further. So, I mean, at, at this rate, it's, I mean, you know, public outreach is our only option.
Right. And that's what I'm saying, I think we just, I know about it, because I serve on a, on a park-type board, but I wouldn't, I don't think the average person does. So we have community centers all over our county. If you'll help us, Scott can help get the signs designed, you know, we can at least be a part of your ambassador network here.
Fantastic, appreciate it.
Okay, super.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Scott, take us through the natural resource specialist number, position.
Recommend approval.
Oh, yeah. I was saying, what?
Okay, so-
I remind you, it's a budget item.
Actually, this is being paid for by a grant. So anyhow, this is basically a hybrid type of a position that, Judges, you know, I've been talking with you about for several months.
Right.
Vetted it through HR, and specifically vetted it with Juan in Public Works, because I, what I see with the transition in Public Works, and this position being able to do for Public Works and Coastal Parks, is help them with the doom permitting process under the Doom Protection Act, which we have the Doom Protection Authority for. Also, in this position, we're creating, we're creating requirements for somebody who has the certification to do underground storage tanks, inspections and testing, and specifically recruiting for ArcGIS skills, because that's something that they're trying to struggle with right now, and we're covering their base ArcGIS maps, and it's a skill set I don't have, you know? There are a lot of people at the university that have that skill set, that would, doing ArcGIS mapping. It's a, it's a great skill set to have, and, you know, I could benefit from that as well. And so outside of what they would be doing in that position, supporting Public Works, which I think that's primarily where the bulk of their effort's going to be during the first year, well, we get, because Karen Bosch is gone, Tony Palamas is gone, Juan's going to be retiring, and so we got to get a handle on that, then they could help me basically do, deal with all my core permitting, and that I have to deal with out there, and environmental compliance. So it's kind of a hybrid of a position, where we both share it, and it's being paid for by grant funds for three years.
Scott, since you brought up the grants, what grant is this?
Go Mesa.
Go Mesa, can you put the, can you put it on here, so that we know it's a grant?
Yep. It's authorized use.
And we, it was DePac, you, you misspoke, but I knew, I knew what you were talking
You misspoke, but I knew what you were talking about. With DePauk's impending retirement, he's been doing all of our Dune Protection permits. And so we've talked to Juan, you and I, and I've talked to Juan about this and DePauk, and we think this is the best solution. And it allows for, as you said, the cross collateralization of GIS plus Dune Protection plus extra.
Yep. And it'll allow somebody to also shadow, since DePauk is not gone, it allows them to shadow them because, you know, we don't like to fill a position until it's vacant.
Right.
And so we get that cross resources that are able to do that. It's very helpful, but we don't very often have an opportunity to do in the county.
Right. Okay.
Brent's not here. I'll speak up for you. So moved.
Take a motion, second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign.
Okay, thank you all. This is a good thing, it really is.
Thank you.
Three years, right?
Three years. Okay, and let's see. Now, we are going to hear from Juan, and we're going to be talking about vector control. And actually, we just got a good, hi Julie.
Number seven.
I did, Julie? I'm so sorry. What? That was like the, definitely come up on this one.
This is the one you've been waiting for.
These glasses are dirty. I'm going to have to clean them. This is a discuss and consider approval of a personnel policy that I'm going to have Julie explain to everybody regarding emergency management.
I submitted the policy with the changes that I'm requesting. And the reason that we're requesting is that during a storm or bad weather day, exempt employees are not compensated for the extra hours that they put in during the storm. And during Hurricane Harvey, there were several days and hours that exempt employees put in with being here and cleaning up and the recovery and everything that we've done. And like I said, they were not compensated. FEMA has a policy that they will compensate exempt employees if we have it in our policy handbook. So that's what we're doing right now. We're putting it in our handbook so that way, in the event that there is a natural disaster that comes about and FEMA is willing to pay, we will get reimbursed for it.
So moved.
I do have one quick change down at the bottom.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It says up to 10 days. However, that's supposed to mean 10 calendar days. So I would like to actually change it to 14 days, which is 14, I'm sorry, 10 business days, which is equivalent to 14 calendar days.
Right.
So I just want to make that quick change.
And I've got a motion and a second. And any further discussion? Yeah, I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for, you know, this got revealed to me during the state exercise just 30 days ago. And we, and I just said, this, we have to change this.
We had a big discussion about that afterwards, too, in that everybody should have gotten paid, everybody that was here should have gotten paid.
So, I'm so glad, so glad. And so, yes, and I'm going to go ahead and make, can we make sure that motion does include the change?
Sure.
For the clerk, she's going to change it from 10 business days to, I'm sorry, to 14. 14 calendar days. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Thank you so much, Julie.
And now they'll present this to civil service rules for their approval as well.
Okay, Julie. And just give us a little email to make sure that we know that's done, so we know it's real policy. How long will that take, Lauda?
It depends on the commission when they can get a quorum set up here, and they can do it as quickly as possible.
I want them to do it. We are in hurricane season. Julie, I would like you to make sure that whatever it takes, expediting, call them, let them know that we really, the civil service side needs to meet and get this done. We are in hurricane season. We're always in emergency-ready moment, but...
Not in a hurry, just tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay, Juan, we're going to talk about mosquitoes and vector control.
Judge, Commissioners, how are you doing?
Yes.
Commissioner, just a quick, brief presentation on vector control. Vector control has been with the county ever since 2004. That's when it was established. Noasis County has three vector, full-time, highly-trained, certified vector control technicians, which with combined, they have over 60 years of experience in doing vector control. I do have Donacio Diaz, Victor Inohosa...
A whole bunch.
Yes, sir, Michael, Mike Flores.
The whole bunch.
Here. So they are the experts. Vector control has assisted with other municipalities with the vector control during high volumes of mosquito activity. Vector control has created their own documentation and pretty much their own protocols ever since when they were here with the county. The Texas Department of Agriculture performs periodic audits and inspects of the documents that our vector control has according, also with the licensing and equipment and chemicals used. And as of today, knock on wood, no violations have been given to our vector control. In other words, that's local, state, and federal. So we have not received any type of violations with our spraying. Adotacite, adotacite is a spraying. It's a spray that you do at night or from dawn to the morning. And it's the least amount of people and benefits insects that are on the streets, but also because it's a time when mosquitoes are the most active, therefore, the most mosquitoes can be targeted. So that's when the adotacite is sprayed. It's sprayed at the night times. The larvicide, larvicide is targeted to, against the larva of the life stage of an insect, and it's most commonly used for mosquitoes. Pretty much what you're looking at, it's kind of like a tablet that's put in the water, kind of like in the ditches where there's standing water. And what that does, it kills the larvicide that's in the water, in standing water. Victor, you have a copy of those? We do have a copy of a spreadsheet that we put together, which identifies what chemicals we use for, also for the adotacite and for the larvicide. It's a pretty...
Thank you, sir.
It's a copy of what's on the screen.
And Judge, I asked Juan to put this on the agenda because I came across an article from the Texas Observer, talk about mosquitoes, how bad they are, but that some of the chemicals that are used in Texas are even worse than the actual problem. So that's why Juan wanted to bring this to our attention, just to kind of reassure us that we're using the best methods that they have available and that they work. Obviously, they say, you know, in the article, if they have adjacent links that you can follow and different studies that have been done. But obviously, dunks are better because it kills the larvae. And I know that Victor has educated me a lot on this, and I didn't realize how many subspecies or species of mosquitoes are until he started naming most of them. I didn't even, I just thought a mosquito is a mosquito. But anyway, yeah, there's a lot. But, so the dunking works the best, but in the areas that we have to cover, it's a widespread area. And the article does indicate that I think there needs to be monitoring on what we're actually using, but at the levels y'all are talking about, they're probably not as severe as compared to what was described.
That is correct, Commissioner. If you look at the spreadsheet that was provided, of course, the adotacite is one of the ones that the county uses, which is highlighted in yellow. The Natler 2E-C is another one that's also used, and that's a spray. And then you have the Vectaback, which is not used yet. Hopefully, we get the new piece of equipment that we're looking at, which is the turbine. Hopefully, we'll be using that one for larvicide. And then the AquaDuet is also...
The Buffalo?
It's the Buffalo turbine.
The Buffalo turbine?
Yes, ma'am. That'll be the one that hopefully we'll be using that chemical with. And then, of course, the AquaDuet, is that correct? Noasis County, that's adotacite. And then the Mosquito Masher 412, that's another one, that's another adotacite that we use. Of course, they all have pretty much the same chemicals in it. The main thing, Commissioner, and it's kind of like you stated, is that we've, that when we spray these, this is that we spray it per the manufacturer's recommendation, and that it's diluted the way the manufacturer is recommending. So pretty much, it's just following the requirements. There also, there's, and I noticed on the article, Commissioner, that I think Abeline did a do-nothing. In other words, they don't spray, they haven't sprayed for four years. What we look at that is that, you know, what happens if you do have an outbreak of Zika or West Nile? You still got to control it, so you still got to spray. So that's one thing that, I mean, if we don't spray, then we might have, and I know we've already had, I think it was last year, September timeframe, October, that we did get a hot, one of the West Nile, and that's the reason why we had to control that. And I think we controlled it for two weeks straight, Victor? Two weeks, two weeks straight. So in doing that, and if you do a do-nothing effect, and if you don't go out and spray, then probably, you probably won't have people going out and have any outdoor activities because there's going to be a lot of mosquitoes. And then you'll probably have more people that are sick because possibility that somebody might get sick from all the mosquitoes, the stuff that they carry. And then, and then you're going to have a high volume of people going to the hospital, possibly because of getting sick. There are other organic treatments that we looked at, and I talked to our staff about that with Victor and Michael and Don. And there are some other organic materials, but they do cost a lot of money, and probably they're less effective than what we're spraying. Any questions?
And of course, we work with the health department and...
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, we're constantly getting the most up-to-date information. Yeah.
And we do safety for the employee.
Come on up, yeah.
And we do safety for the, for the public.
We do safety for the public, okay. Because this article that Commissioner Modis found, one of the things that was interesting is that they said, you know, there's been no cases of West Nile. But would you all let us know? Is that information that we could get? I think you should let us know. I actually know somebody who was affected by West Nile. This was many years ago, but the scars she bears to this day, I've never seen anything like it. And so if we can save that one little girl, you know?
Can I say something?
Yes.
Are, the products we use are safer than...
Come to the microphone, yes, sir.
They're safer than other cities and counties use, that city, county use Melatian. And the Melatian, the city uses in counties is long-lasting. It lasts in the ground or in the, on the plants where the animals eat the grass for 18 or 20 days. Our product lasts like overnight and then dissipates. So our target is only the mosquito, the adult mosquito. It also is the larvae. That's it. What we use in larvicide is very organic, and you have an insect regulator. So what that means, that, that the larvae does not mutate to another stage, so it won't grow. So it'll just suffocate. So it's safe for the patients, couples.
All right. Well, I'm glad you brought it up because I've always wondered too, and I like knowing that we're staying ahead of the game. And then, don't feel timid. If you think, if you hear or know that there's something better that's being used somewhere else, we want to know about it because we want the best impact to kill mosquitoes with the least harm.
Since they hired Mike and I...
Yes.
We developed a program where it's safest part.
Good.
So we're doing a lot different than a lot of cities. We recommend a lot of stuff to a lot of cities, like I would do say, we go and check them out and say, this is the right product to use for the city.
Okay.
So they follow us.
Okay. And is everybody kind of following us, following suit?
Yes.
Okay.
The smaller cities, Robson, we recommended some to them, so they're following us also.
That's good. Okay. Are there any other questions?
Good job, guys. Let me ask you one question, just when you spray, so people know, because we all get calls, I've never seen them out here. Well, I think you spray like for 3:00 in the morning, right? 4:00, 5:00?
At times, our machines are so quiet that you don't, you can be, you can be outside and you don't hear us coming. And it's very good because it doesn't scare horses or other animals. And our insecticide is hardly no odor. People say, did you spray? They call it, did you spray? Yeah, we went by that. We have our maps. So, and, but they see, the difference is when they see a reduction of mosquitoes, that's the real difference.
Yeah, I think we've had one case of West Nile here, right? One or two?
Something last summer, right?
Yeah.
Or last...
Yeah, and, and that's pretty good to affect that we keep track in larvicide and adotacide. And we also do surveillance on traps. We catch mosquitoes on a Monday and Tuesday, we send them out to get tested for West Nile. We also see the population of mosquito, New Jersey light traps. We try and pick them up every day to see the population of mosquito coming up or going down.
Thank you, guys. Do a good job.
Thank you all so much. Thank you for spraying. Thank you. The next one, I'm going to have Lauda take up. The only thing, I'll set the stage, is that you might say, didn't we just do this? Because it looks so alike at the last community, at the last Commissioner's Court, we handled an item and we approved Lynn Butler from Hush Blackwell LLP for the purposes of the foreign trade zone issue that we have, which is such a highly specialized area. And this, this Commissioner's is the amendment that Lauda will basically be drafting to expand it to bankruptcy and tax abatements. And the reason is, is that we have a situation that has developed where we need that type of expertise. I actually had Dale, and I really appreciate it, and I think I'm going to forward it to Tyner so he can disseminate it to everybody. I think we should all know what tax abatements we have in the county, and you should know when they start and when they stop and what the value is. And when you have an issue with one of them, you know, like we actually have right now, I think that's, it's good to really know. The other thing that I learned, and I wish Belinda is here, I don't know if I misheard you, but I feel like you said that most abatements, no, maybe this is Lauda, are drafted by an attorney.
Yes.
But in one case, it was not drafted by an attorney. Not, in other words, the EDC typically brings them to us.
Right, correct.
But, so any future abatements, I would like to make sure that we have an attorney drafting these abatements. And in one, you'll see that they goes out to like 2034. And I'm just sort of like, what happens is we typically use the same format for everybody. And I don't think that that's going to be good going forward because, for example, by 2034, certain industries are perfectly situated for a long term, but others might be completely gone. The market might not be there in that time period. So I think it's good to have an attorney give you these types of consults.
Before you actually approve any tax abatement agreement, you also have to approve guidelines. And those guidelines, sometimes, like you're saying, you know, they have to be amended as well in order, you know, the circumstances are different. So obviously, you're supposed to look at those guidelines on a yearly basis. And so that'll come kind of together.
Right.
This is the very first time that we've had a tax abatement whereby the entity goes bankrupt. So it is, it is important that we do not have the expertise to actually evaluate and give a recommendation to the court with regards to this matter. And so Lynn Butler, who we already hired, that is his expertise, bankruptcy. And so if you look at the letter agreement, which is amended on the first page, it, the first paragraph that says client and scope representation, the second paragraph is what was amended. And we're basically saying that is expanded to represent us in advising us on the fair, the foreign trade zones within Noasis County, advising bankruptcy issues arising from certain bankruptcy cases and advising on tax abatement agreements in relation to those bankruptcy cases. So basically, that's what was amended. And so I am working with him. He is evaluating this, and we'll soon get a recommendation and we'll bring it back. So we ask that you approve this amendment.
So moved.
Second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Also, just, I should note, because I'm so, so highly critical sometimes, I really do appreciate all the work Belinda did on this particular issue because I actually like read it 10 times because it's really particular. And it's technical and it's, and, but I don't want to, sometimes we bring in specialists, that's not to say that they're not working closely with the people that we already have here. And I just want to thank Belinda for the work that you did do, and you're not off the hook, you have to work with him, most likely, you know, very closely. But it's, it's a good start, but to be able to have this really unique situation come up, I'm grateful for the, for y'all's flexibility in seeing that this is important. So thank you.
It does help us too, even though obviously it costs a little bit of money because I'm still shorthanded, so...
Oh, good point. Thank you. I think you're going to find him to be an exceptional, I think he was the youngest certified bankruptcy specialist when we were young. We're not young anymore, but when he was certified, he was the youngest guy in the state. I'm still young. Okay, believe it or not, the next one is a little bit, I think it's your domain as well.
Right. It's, this is the bankruptcy case that I was talking about.
Yeah.
And so all this is, is you're receiving the documents that basically say that the ownership was transferred to polymers, corporate key polymers from the tax abatement, I mean, I'm sorry, because of the bankruptcy claim. And so all your, it's basically informing you. And so it's CC polymers now that is asking that we honor that tax abatement that basically outside counsel is helping us to evaluate.
Right. And that's the only thing I was going to say is before we sign anything, since we already have him, just make sure there's nothing in there that could prevent any recourse from, you know, I just want to make sure it's fine. It sounds like it's just a receipt of acknowledgement.
This one is just a receipt.
But, but I would, might make sure before we execute... But, but I would might make sure before we execute or sign, just have him look at it. Are they asking us to sign or acknowledge?
No, this is...
Just a receipt of...
Basically, this was our, our way of informing the court.
Got it.
We put this...
So no action is required?
No action.
Okay, in that case, I'll move forward.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So this company has taken over the M and G.
Yes ma'am.
Do we know anything about this company?
CC Polymers, um, basically, all that I know of is what's Googled. I don't know much about it.
Um, Carolyn, I can, Commissioner, I think they came to visit with me. I think if you're interested, because it's your precinct, I would really like to go ahead and forward the business cards that I got. Here's the one positive thing, the plant manager, oops, sorry. Plant manager that was with M and G stayed with CC Polymers. In addition, I think their governmental affairs person is also the same person that was with M and G. Whereas they hired the same people. And then the original Italian, M and G was an Italian company. And the gentleman that was the liaison between the Porta Corpus Christi and M and G, he also stayed. So I recognize three of them. And then this group, CC Polymers, is a consortium, believe it or not, of, all three of them are competitors in the PET market. And so one is an Indonesian company and the other one is a Mexican company, Alpac, and I think it's Endurama. But together, they formed a DBA called CC Polymers. So it's, I think it'd be very important for you to, to get to meet them and, and know them. But at least some of them were, uh, previously employed.
Thank you.
You can also, um, because the EDC was involved, you can also contact them.
Okay, it's always leery when they take over, it reminds me of Slitterborn.
Okay, so we're going to go to the next one. Um, okay, that's number 11. And Tyner, I think you and I are probably going to take some of this, uh, up. It's discuss and consider approval of a personal services contract with Tim Richardson related to Restore Act funding sources and related matters. And before you react, because I know I'm switching, as I say, do I have the prerogative to switch my mind? I want to ask a legal question before I, my instincts were to table this issue because, but I have a question before, is that okay?
Yeah.
What if we amended it, just for the interest of time? What if we amended it and said, discuss and consider approval of allowing the county attorney to execute a consulting services agreement? In other words, it's my understanding we have the wrong agreement. And, but in the interest of time, could the court, I don't think it matters to this court what type of agreement, as long as it's the one you say we need. What matters to the court is that we get, you know, when we, does that make sense? I want to make certain that I can...
Actually, um, because we're saying personal services contract, we're saying that's an exception to the bidding process. And so that's why it is important to have the right contract in, in the perspective of, we're showing the court and we're showing the public that this didn't have to go bid out.
But what about consulting services?
But in this, in, again, the consulting services, I thought this was going to be less than fifty thousand, was that what I understood?
Correct.
Right, so, um...
There's a ton.
When we're talking about consulting, we're also talking about a professional services contract.
Okay.
It's also an exception to the, to the bidding process as well. So, uh, I don't think, I, I would not recommend it. I, I don't think that is sufficient notice.
You want us to come back on the thirty first, okay. I just want to make that clear. Is it okay if I explain now to the commissioners what the heck's happening? Okay, so basically, um, there is a grant that is, um, available to us. Uh, it's the Restore Act. And this grant was really brought to us by, um, by representatives of Clayburg County. And they are looking to do a multi-county, uh, grant. And the opportunity is perfect because I want to do a multi-county grant with Clayburg County too. So this matched up for us. However, this grant really, in my opinion, would be in the magnitude of over a hundred million dollars. The purpose of the grant is for, um, flood mitigation, you could call it, you could call it drainage for the, the lack of a, a less sophisticated, it's really about drainage and, and mitigation control, flood mitigation control. And what we wanted to do was that Clayburg County has sought our assistance in working with the, with one consultant in particular that has expertise and professional experience. And our goal was to bring to you today his, um, his contract to be shared with Clayburg County. However, the way we styled it personal is not going to work for, is that, is that, it's just not the appropriate, um, kind of a contract for him and the way he works. And so it really needs to be a consulting services contract. And because we're lucky and we have a meeting right around the corner, we can get it right. I was trying to see if we could just get it right today and authorize Lauda to do it. But it doesn't seem like that's going to, to work. But I want the audience to know, mainly Clayburg County to know, because they're in the House today, that it was very important to me that, um, that you understand the rationale and the reasoning behind tabling this issue is because the contract as we have it is not acceptable in its right format. And the county attorney, is that, is that the best way to describe it?
It's not sufficient notice.
It's not, so, go ahead and, if you don't mind, just, because I want...
I mean, it's not sufficient notice, uh, for purposes of how we're going to enter into an agreement with, uh, this person.
And you do believe that if we were to bring back the proper, the consulting services agreement, that would also be an exception to the process?
I, um, that's one of the things that I'm going to...
You're going to look at?
To see if there are professional...
Is the time table okay with you, um, if we could get this on the next agenda? If I table it?
Seventy-two hours, there's no problem.
Okay, Edward, I know you're standing there, uh, you want to add, add?
It's, um, Judge, it's also for us, it's a drainage for, uh, Baffin Bay, it's, uh, water quality. You know, that's also a project. The other thing, or the other component that we're also bringing in is an intergovernmental agreement between us and Clayburg County as well to work this project. It benefits them and benefits us, that's what we're also looking at.
And interlocal agreement is, is necessary in order to be able to share cost, isn't that correct? And I should tell you that, um, we haven't had this opportunity, but Clayburg welcomes other counties being a part of this process. Um, if, for example, Jim Wells, which is also part of the water quality in the watershed. But again, we just, time being of the essence, we have not had that. We needed, we thought we would come here first, but our goal might be to have multiple interlocal agreements with multiple counties. This would entertain, um, a massive, um, really drainage project, right? And again, the reason Clayburg is interested is because Baffin Bay has specific issues with water quality, terrible stagnation, high nitrogen rates. It's been a long, it's been a problem. And we now have a mechanism through Restore Act, this particular bucket, uh, and we vetted it very carefully. We have a placeholder for this grant, commissioners. But again, getting this very important consultant is, is, it's just an absolute necessity in order to see, uh, this project's through. So hopefully, I guess, on the thirty first, we'll bring it back to you.
Can I ask a question? Laura, I'm just trying to understand, this seems like such a simple thing to me to just redo the contract to what it should be. So why is it so difficult and what is sufficient notice? I'm just trying to figure out why we can't do it.
Basically, what we're saying is that we're, we're entering into a personal services contract with this individual and we're not.
And you just can't change that and...
The, the thing of the matter is, I, um, why don't we, um, pass this up a little bit? Let me, let me review it and see if in fact, I can get it done, just, just...
Just, okay, let me skip it for now.
Let me look at it.
Okay, sounds, sounds fair, thank you Edward, let's, let's go on. Um, uh, the next one is also related, Edward? Isn't that going to be related to eleven or?
Yes, that's related to eleven.
Okay, we're just going to hold then, let's hold, eleven and twelve are going to be on a hold. Okay, um, Maria, hi Maria.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
So, I'm going to bore you with a couple of, uh, just kind of preliminary background information just because it's a GLO requirement. So you've heard some of this stuff before, um, but it'll preface the actual discussion that I need to, um, present today. Um, so we will be soliciting the input, input and participation of county residents regarding proposed infrastructure improvement applications for the Texas General Land Office GLO, uh, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Fund. Um, so the amount of funding available to Nuasis County is four million, six hundred forty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-nine cents. This amount was calculated using an approved method of distribution established by the Coastal Bend Council of Governments. The funds are provided by the GLO, by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, referred to as HUD. Each proposed project must meet one of the three national objectives, which is also established by HUD, which is to benefit, uh, low and moderate income persons, which is referred to as LMI. This means that fifty-one percent of the residents within the defined project area must be low to moderate income persons. Um, this, the other two national objectives are, um, aid in the prevention of slums, I'm sorry, prevention or elimination of slums and blight. This does not apply to the county, uh, or meet an urgent need. Um, and this category can only be used after seventy percent of the funding is directed toward the LMI persons and areas. So back on June nineteenth, we held a public hearing to, uh, delineate out the projects, um, that we have identified. And, um, the original project list that was presented on June nineteenth was as follows. It was County Road, uh, Nuasis County Road sixty-seven improvement projects, that would be south from FM six sixty-five. The estimated total project cost, this would include engineering and grant administration services. The total project cost for that project was one million, three hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. The second project was Nuasis County Road sixty-nine improvement project from County Road forty-eight to County Road fifty-two. Estimated total project cost, one million, two hundred seventy-two thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars. Uh, the next project, County Road seventy-seven, from FM twenty-eight twenty-six to County Road thirty, estimated total project cost of one million, sixty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We also identified, uh, replacement, replayer of the emergency notification marquee sign. This is the marquee sign located out at the regional fairgrounds. That, uh, estimated project cost is two hundred ninety-seven thousand, one dollar. Um, and then we also identified two, um, projects that we had submitted, uh, through Texas Division of Emergency Management that required a twenty-five percent match. We are able to use the GLO money for this match and that was the Nuasis County Drainage, um, countywide drainage plan and hazard mitigation action plan update. That match was twenty-two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And on a Nuasis County courthouse emergency generator, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So that was the, that was the proposed project list that was, uh, presented on June nineteenth. We, um, opened up those applications and made them available for thirty days for public comment. We are now presenting our revised project list and this will be our revised application. This new application will be, um, posted for public comment and again for another thirty days. Um, so we will, so the only difference between the original project list and the revised project list, the original project list had listed two alternative projects. One of them was Bauer Road in Robstown, uh, from County Road forty-four to State Highway forty-four. And the other alternative project was County Road thirty-three drainage improvements, which would be in the event that we do not receive the matching funds or we do not receive the TDM grant. Um, that was going to be a project in Commissioner Chesney's precinct that doesn't meet LMI requirements but would meet the urgent need. So the revised project list, um, the only difference is we are advancing the Bauer Road project to replace County Road seventy-seven project. And the estimated cost would be, um, approximately the same, which is one million, sixty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So, um, the project list remains the same except we are advancing what was an alternate project in the original application of Bauer Road to a main project and then, uh, then deleting out the County Road seventy-seven project.
Commissioner Modas, do you want to, you're okay with that change?
Yeah, and I mean, it's not necessarily deleting, it's just moving to the seventy-seven down to alternate, it's just kind of swapping. And, um, you know, we're, we're trying to work hard with our partners and, you know, that's one of the things that, that I've always pushed for being here and I think that this, uh, makes good sense for us because it is more of a, very much more of a rural service, even though it is connected within the city limits. I think there's been other projects that have been done that kind of show that example in other precincts. Um, but also, I mean, there, you know, there's a potential connection to, um, TechStop. I think that when our, uh, what Juan had mentioned to me earlier. So, you know, there's, there's some options if this grant doesn't even go forward, if it doesn't happen or whatever. Um, I think there's still some alternatives that we have out there. But I think it's important to, to show our partners that this is a, a priority for me and, and I hope for the court as well.
I've got a motion.
Second.
And I've got a second, or is there any further discussion?
Just to finish, so, just because I have to say it. Um, so this revised application will be, um, available for public comment, uh, for the next thirty days. It'll open up today, July twenty-fourth through August twenty-sixth. The final applications will be, the final application will be placed on the August twenty-eighth Commissioner's Court Agenda for approval through a resolution with the final application due to the GLO on August thirty-first.
Do you know when you'll find out if you get it?
I think there's a pretty quick turnaround because, um, I am told that they're going to start, you know, after September first, if applications are not received, they are going to be reallocating funds for anybody that did not submit their application by the deadline. So I'm pretty sure it's going to be a pretty quick turnaround, I, I hope.
I do too. I just want to echo, because I'm on my Census twenty-twenty kick until the end of Census, is that CDBG is one of those very important funding sources that is directly related to our census count. And so people are always asking, why is it important, why is it important? And I try to give them the basics, education dollars, you know, transportation dollars, Medicaid dollars. And then all of a sudden, when you said CDBG, I, I need to add that to my repertoire. So this is four point four million dollars to our county potentially. And again, I mean, these numbers can get bigger in the future if, if our population count merits it. So just want people to remember that.
Yeah, definitely, because CDBG money comes from HUD and they do require that low to moderate income, we had to use Census data to, um, to, to qualify these projects.
Right, so anyway, just, you know, food for thought, everybody.
Quick question.
Yes ma'am.
I was just wondering, I'm trying to figure out why this was changed. And so why was Bauer Road so important over the County Road seventy-seven?
Uh, John, Commissioner?
They're both important, I think that both roads are important. Uh, they both serve the same purpose. Um, Precinct Three has more county road mileage than any other precinct in, in the county. You know, we have a lot of responsibility, but if you drive down Bauer Road, you'll see the need for it. Like I said, it's very much of a rural road. And I think there's still is some question as far as, um, to be honest with you, there's, there's a question, is, is this county road or is this a city road or is this TechStop responsibility? But I think we need to be able to put it up on the top of the list because this is more priority, serves more people to me than, than anyone else in, in any other project we have in the precinct. And so just by moving this, I think this, this allows everyone to understand this is important. And that for any reason we have any questions or any doubts, we can still go back and fall back on our alternative. That's why we have alternative plans. So County Road seventy-seven is still just as important, still reach out to them. I think that there's an opportunity to them for future funding, part of my money and, and other funding sources to help make that happen as well. Because we still want to support the business corridor that we're building up, um, I sixty-nine. So it's very much important, it's just, it's still on the list. I just felt that for me, it's important to show that Bauer Road is important uh, because of the amount of people that we serve on that road. And I still, like I said, I think there's, there's some question of interpretation of whether that road is sixty-nine or not. You go to Google map right now, it'll tell you it's County Road sixty-nine. If you ask others in the courthouse based on their institutional knowledge, they'll say it's not. But I think that we still need to move forward, showing that this is a priority. Because if it is, I would hate for it to be a missed opportunity for us to serve. And I do feel that it does serve a county, uh, purpose, a county nexus there, uh, on Bauer Road.
I just want to say, we have so many roads to really address. I just, thank you Maria, keep looking, keep looking for more opportunities. These are the most expensive, it's a million a mile, just tell yourself that. Every time you think see a road, every time you do a mile, tell yourself, right JJ? Million dollars, million dollars. Um, we've got to address this. I want you to know if seventy-seven, this, this, whatever project doesn't make it to this one, we, Juan and I really do have priority lists. But we also are working on identifying other resources to address county roads. So if this one, if, if you feel like there's a, a project that really, you know, needs advancing, um, my goal is, and I, I think the TIF fund, Juan, is where we're going to be headed here. I think that there's ways to get, those aren't grants, guys, but they are almost, the interest is so low and this, they stretch out for such long periods of time on those loans. I really... I really like that for a couple of our roads. I don't think we should overdo it, but I think that, that we're just such a great need. So, I think that if your project didn't make it forward for this one, I say let's, right now, as soon as we finish this, Maria, after August twenty-eighth, let's go to the next set.
Commissioner Vaughn, just to kind of add to what Commissioner Modest said, the challenge with this funding was that, that we had to meet that low to moderate income area. And Bauer Road is almost, you know, the perfect project because it is, you know, in a low to moderate income area. So, that was the challenge with this funding. We had to pick roads that met that objective rather than, you know, just kind of picking, there might be a road that's more needed, but it's not in an LMI area, so it's not eligible for this.
I'm not objecting to it, I'm just wondering because they changed it. I'm wondering, are there more homes there? Was that the concept of it, were there a business there? That's my question.
Yeah, it does, it does better meet the LMI objective since it is within the city of Ropsdowne.
There's a mix of business and residents that are on that road. Because the southern part of the road is definitely more business along there, but then you just change right into residential. So, there is a mixture of both. It's not as big as what you would find off of County Road seventy-seven with Textile. But like Maria said, thank you for that, the LMI is, it's, you can go and you'll see the need.
But I'm all over seventy-seven, like Textile Road, like if I had a number one, my own personal number one, it's that one because it's directly related to economic development. So, it's on my high, ask Juan, I talk about it every day, it's on my high priority list. Edward, did you want to comment?
We actually do have funding. Commissioner Modest, about a year or two ago, had some funding allocated to seventy-seven.
Okay.
Got about seven hundred thousand to that, so that would also help because also Textile was looking at providing additional funding to help that project. We were just short of funding to do that project.
You're saying that we still have seven hundred thousand? So that we can work on that?
I have seven hundred thousand.
I don't know if Sean wants to give it all up, but...
I don't want to give it all up.
No, no, but the point is we can work together.
We will work together, that's why I was saying it, I have funding.
Edward wants to give it all away.
Edward, we won't help you out then. I have some funding for, and the company has buy-in, I think that they're still interested in. And so, there's some other swaps.
Yeah.
If we can find that we can get it still done within the years.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Maria, you got all your requirements in. You're, okay, now, Michael, take us through purchasing.
Before, before we go on, going back to that issue on the personal services, basically, we need to...
She's going to address your issue.
That's okay, we'll have to reschedule it. The reasoning, facts kind of determine what kind of documentation we need. And not only does that, facts give us the documentation process, it also gives us what language is on the agenda item. And so, right now, I was hearing about sharing costs. So, now I think we need probably an interlocal as opposed to this consulting agreement. So, that's why, give us a little bit of time.
That's why I wanted the reasoning, it just seems simple to me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
And also, Lourdes, on number twelve, we skipped it while you were out. Is that also going to need the same interlocal? We didn't discuss it, but...
Were they going to pay for the engineer as well, share the cost? This is just a selection, we can bring back the contract and I'll determine which. But, but if it's, if it's something that's going to be shared, then perhaps we do need the interlocal. Are we, are we sharing in the cost?
In the case of Mr. Richardson, yes, as well. I mean, it's going to be a shared cost.
But for the engineer?
The way that I understand it, they've done work in Nuasis County for Claybrook County. So, they would be working for us on a, we can't pay for work they've already done.
Right.
So, we'd be paying for work that they were going to do for us in the future.
But would it be requested as being a part of an interlocal, I think?
I would agree, yes.
Okay, so then it's tabled as well, then we'll look at both of them together.
But the good news is, is that we can, we have enough time to maybe get it on the thirty-first.
Yeah, hopefully so.
Hopefully so. If that's the message that could be taken back, that'd be appreciated, Edward. If you would coordinate the messaging so that it's very clear why, why we weren't able to address it here today. Okay, all right, I'm sorry, Michael.
That's all right.
So, we need to table...
Oh, let's go back to eleven. I did get a motion from Judge Jag to, I mean, Commissioner Jag to do a motion to table, but I didn't get a second. And I've got a second. And now, all those in favor of tabling item number eleven to July thirty-first signify by saying aye, aye? And then, pose same sign. And then on twelve, could I have another motion to table? And all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Mr. Jeller, in the mood for tabling, let's go to four C one, Commissioner.
Yeah, that wasn't supposed to be on there, but he didn't know that.
A motion to table on, by Commissioner Vaughn? Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Okay, and then before we step into the next one, I did go back and pull the contract for the farmland lease on the question of whether, if we dissolve the lease after they fertilize the ground and there is language in it that says that the less horse shall pay the less see the costs incurred, the less see shall provide sufficient evidence of the reasonable and necessary costs that were incurred. So, it is in there.
Thank you. Okay, that's, that's great.
Okay, so now we're ready to move on to discussing award IFB number thirty-one oh six nineteen for motor, oil, and lubricants.
What do we have, just a stash of it? For all our vehicles, I mean, that's such an odd...
There's twenty-eight different items. And because of the cost involved is why we have to do it.
Yeah, no, I saw, I just, that's, wow. Thank you.
Buying it in bulk?
Yeah. Hope this is like a Costco item. Do you see the cost? Unbelievable.
Goodness. How long's that last?
It's a new truck. It's a new truck, Judge.
But this is for everything, every car we have.
Okay, so, so on this item, this bid consists of twenty-eight specific items plus one item that's a kind of a catch-all discount for other products not listed. We received two bids, Arnold Oil and Jamison Transportation Products. Arnold Oil was the low bidder for twenty-seven of the twenty-eight items. There was only one item that went the other way. And so, we're going to recommend award to Arnold Oil Company for these products.
And can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the award? If hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And in case you're wondering, I did go back and look at kind of the cost change from two years ago to now. It seems like we've been going at a five percent rate increase each year. And the largest item is the diesel motor oil. And in this case, when we looked at the two bids, the one for Arnold was like forty-three percent less than the next bidder, so...
And, and I'm just curious, like, all these products, you know how we normally could buy a product, you know, on a big, a bid board? I mean, is this a particular product that's not available to us in that regard, or...
There have been some phone conversations amongst the different providers working with one of the buy boards. And we'll investigate that. Sometimes there's some added costs when we go that method.
I understand.
And when we bid this way, we can get really the cheapest cost to the county, but we do want to investigate.
I think it's just worthy of a look, I mean, just because of the five percent steady increase. Sometimes you don't feel it, but when you look back, you say, well, in the last five years, it's gone up a quarter, twenty-five percent, then it's just, that's too much. So, anyway, okay, thank you, Michael. Did we, we did a vote, right, on the, all that? So, we're now ready to go to the network. The National Network Service.
Okay, so, if y'all bear with me, I need to get out quite a bit of information. Just to, I had gone back and looked at the video that we also presented us two years ago, and there were quite a few questions that came up at that time. So, I'd try, I'm going to try to cover as much as I can on that. But today, our main goal, and I'm going to be speaking basically to both agenda items, the four C three and four C four, which includes RFP for the National Network and the RFP for the reinsurance stop-loss. But our main goal is to award these items so that the county can maintain our coverage for our county employees and their dependents effective October first, twenty nineteen, to September thirty, twenty twenty, in preparation for the open enrollment that will be beginning August twenty-first and twenty-second. And as always, the county seeks to obtain the best network available for the employees and their dependents with the widest selection of health providers, the best service, and the broadest possible coverage at the least possible cost. Judge Canalis also asked that we open the RFP up to include additional services that could be offered by the various proposers. The county is fortunate to be assisted in this RFP process by our health insurance consultant, Tomas Duran. It is important to note that Mr. Duran is hired on a fee basis, free of any commissions, meaning that he does not receive any commissions on the contracts that are to be awarded and therefore is in a position to represent the county's best interests in evaluating the proposals. The process of reviewing proposals for the county's health network coverage includes a meticulous review of the repricing exercise and disruption analysis. This is an exercise where Tomas takes a listing of the actual medical bills and strips away any personal information. And the proposers provide their repricing of these individual services based on their coverage plans to arrive at a cost based on this set of data. It is important to note that this data is based on a certain set of variables, such as the number of patients and the specific types of claims associated with this data set. As this is a projection based on historical data, future performance is subject to variability based on the actual claims in that claim period. The repricing data is confidential and therefore must be safeguarded to protect the integrity of the RFP process. We had four proposals for the National Network coverage and one proposal for the aggregate and specific reinsurance stop-loss. The selection committee received a review of the proposal results from our health insurance consultant, Mr. Duran. Some proposers provided a non-responsive proposal seeking an all or none approach. Some requested exclusivity, which would have had a negative impact on our employees' ability to seek services both inside and outside of Nuasis County. However, for thoroughness, Mr. Duran performed a complete review of the repricing exercise and disruption analysis to ensure that the county had every opportunity to review costs and impact to employees. Is everyone familiar with the disruption analysis? We're talking about if we change plans in midstream, how many employees would have to be seeking new doctors that might not be in the new plan? And so, that's part of the evaluation that goes on. One provider also, well, each of the providers submitted optional services. And some of these included employee communication, enrollment meetings, care navigation management, surprise bill support. This is a, this is a service which provides an advocate for the employees when they go to, say, an emergency room and the providers that are providing the services in that emergency room are not considered within the network. And you get this additional billing. This is a service that will provide some advocacy to help assist in mitigating those circumstances. Wellness programs and telemedicine were also additional services listed. The selection committee scored the proposers in the areas of price competitiveness, scope of network, and personnel, system interface, and auditing practices. And I'm going to pass these out right now.
Michael, I'd hate to ask you, can you kind of repeat the part where you said physicians in emergency room, you don't cover your insurance. What do we do with that? I've had three, three incidents already where we go to the emergency room and I get a bill from another doctor from somewhere else. And I sent it to Spahn, and then Spahn sends it back to me, but send it, they're going to work on it. Two of them haven't paid, you know, and I think we should have doctors that take all the insurances. But what's the, I mean, I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry, I wasn't here. But what's the deal in that? I mean, well, are we going to cover that now, is that what you're saying?
So, I think what I want to do is let Tomas Duran speak to that in particular. He's better adept at understanding. There's certain relationships that exist within the network. The emergency room itself is covered, but some of the providers that provide the services in the emergency room belong to separate organizations. And some of those are within the network and some are not within the network. And that can still occur still inside Nuasis County.
I think I shared that with Mr. Duran before, right? That we get separate bills and I don't think we should, I don't think the employees should get separate bills. So, but anyway, I'll hear what Mr. Duran...
So, does that answer, we'll get onto it a little more. So, at this point, I want to go ahead and make the recommendation. And then if y'all want to have your motion and second and begin further discussion, the recommendation from purchasing is going to be based on the results of the analysis. The selection committee recommends award to Boone Chapman and to bring back the contract subject to negotiations.
What's the difference between Chapman and the other ones? I didn't, I'm sorry, but they're all saying why, I mean, they're all approved, they're all good, I guess they're all good. What's the why, 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 yes, yes, yes?
So...
This is really the one that we should look at.
I'm looking at the one on the screen. Oh, this one here?
Yeah, this one's proprietary. That one's just telling you that they did everything, all these are the ones that we actually considered in the insurance committee. They actually fulfilled the requirements of the request for proposal. But this is really what you want to look at. Tomas, you want to...
Yes.
Tell a little bit about, you know, what we're looking at.
Okay. What you have, and maybe what I'd like to try to do is, and I'll try to address the questions that have already come up as we go through this. And I want to say something so that you'll be aware of how we arrived at the, at the end, okay? When he was referring, he and Michael referring to the disruption, what we're talking about is anytime you make a change, not everybody practices everywhere. So, and this can apply to lab or it can apply to physicians. It can apply to providers like hospitals or whatever other facilities there are. The review, our review, my review of the analysis in that regards was that we would have about half of our employees, half of the county employees and dependents would have to shift one way or another. Primarily, to be, I want to make it clear, most physicians, for example, and I use physicians as an example, most physicians have privileges to practice at every facility in town generally. But they have a preference of practicing at specific locations because they don't have the coverage to practice everywhere. And so, when you analyze it in, at that level of detail, we shall do, I literally analyze it to the lowest level that you can, that's when you identify that in fact approximately half and half are divided, okay? In terms of, in terms of claims and individuals. If you look, if you look at the dollars, it's not divided equally. It's, it's a little bit more for one system versus another system. We generally have two major systems in town. That's, that's one of the things that you have to keep in mind as you analyze everything because you don't want to put everything in havoc, okay? Or at least that's the direction that I've always received from, from the county, that you want to try to keep it where people have the ability to go as, to as many as possible as well as to go out of town. And that's the next item that we have to consider is that there are a lot of cases where employees, I'm trying to address the big picture issues, okay? You know, everybody's happy with the services except a doctor may feel compelled to refer someone else to some other facility or the, 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 the surgery that was required, there's some specialty arthroscopically in some other place that's better than others or is perceived as better than others. And substantial sums of money that we spend on an, on an annual basis is located out of town. So, when we develop the pricing, what you do is you identify those claims. And, and this is retrospectively, but also prospectively, we're even, even killed year to year. There's never been any major change. I've had, I've reviewed this account so many times that I can almost predict what's going to happen before even looking at the numbers. But you spend about two million dollars a year out of town on specific referrals for very serious cases. And so, that's significant, and that affects the pricing. So, for example, we have a proposal, and I'm not going to get into the specific details because I can't. It is proprietary and it is confidential. We have a proposal that's very aggressive, and if we could make everybody go to one location, we could save several hundred thousand dollars. location, we could save several hundred thousand dollars. The problem is that that's not a reality. Reality is that you're going to have $2 million spent out of town. So when you send this couple, these people out of town, or they go out of town for specialized services, we lose the discounts of a national network, okay? And that's the real issue. That's where the, the crux of the problem occurs.
Right. But just to be clear, it's because we don't have, for instance, a pediatric neuro, you know, oncologist here.
Texas Children. Last year, last year, we spent a chunk of money at Texas Children Hospital. This year, we haven't, but last year, we did. We had a couple of serious cases that had to go to Texas Children. And so, but, and that's the variable, but while it may have changed from Texas Children to MD Anderson this year, or vice versa, but we basically spend one and a half to $2 million a year in that type of situation, okay? So you have to price that as a variable to the total price of the contract every year. And that's, that to me, those are the two big pictures that you need to know to understand the, the, the comprehensive detailed analysis that's made on where the money's being spent. Addressing the issue, and, and we have two people I know in this room that have been affected by it, I only knew of one, but now I know of two, that have been affected by the situation we have at one of the facilities where the emergency room physicians are practicing at a hospital facility, emergency room, but they're not necessarily a part of the Aetna network, okay? And that's been an ongoing process. One of the items that we're proposing to add to this program is to deal exactly with that, and that is that bill, I don't have it handy right in front of me, the, the surprise bill support program. The surprise bill support program, what it is, is that when this happens at Boone Chapman, which is your TPA, and you go, and, and that occurs, that occurs in another network, at an Aetna network facility, it's going to trigger sending that claim to this system, and it basically will, will, at that time, start negotiating the price with that facility, that emergency doctor, and it will automatically notify all the bill creditors and everybody that this is a medical bill at all the price, and, you know, with the, the legal discussions will be notified to all of the providers as involved, and it'll be notified to the creditors so they cannot take it in consideration, and they will be asked to stop trying to collect from the individual patients, and then they'll take over it. If they also have a legal arm that will take over any potential litigation that may happen, we don't expect it to go there, but the specialists on that system simply to fight those bills. Now, the easy approach would not be to do that. The easy approach is to get providers to make sure that their emergency physicians belong to the networks that the providers belong to. If, for example, Hospital X belongs to the Aetna network, it's unreasonable to have an esthaciologist or have emergency room physicians that are not members of the network that they are, belong to. And so that effort has been ongoing now since it was brought to me six months ago or so. I don't want to say exactly, but approximately sometime six months ago, and I've been involved in those negotiations with both Aetna as well as the management partner for the practice that we're having that difficulty with. I was not aware of your issues, but I'll, as soon as I leave here, I'll, if you allow me to, I'll pick up on it and, and we'll include it in part of the discussions. But that, that's one of the programs that we're recommending that we adopt, and it's a, it's a percentage of savings, so it's not a direct cost to you all itself, but it's when the discussions entail and it's resolved, then there'll be a charge for that. And this, but that gives you the picture on the medical side. Now, if, if, as, as Mr. Robinson said earlier, in our discussions on, on all of this, Judge Canales requested that we expand to get facilities to try to enlarge, not enlarge necessarily, but extend, expand our program for wellness, for all types of other programs. And so we included that as an aspect to be proposed, and, and that's where we have the employee communications, and if these are free charge, free, available, but we have not have full utilization of what was available, okay? I know Human Resources in their newsletter, we've been, every once in a while, they get comments and stuff to put in the newsletter, stuff like that. This would be a fully enhanced program on employee communications for newsletters, mails to homes, distributions here, and basically educate the employees on how the system works and what you can do to improve your health, okay? The next one will be the enrollment meetings. We've always had a representative here for enrollment meeting, but what, that's not what we're talking about. In this case, what we're talking about, those are free, free of charge, okay? It's to really send in several people down here and have a plan where they can sit down and explain the whole process from, from beginning to end of what's covered, what's not covered, what you should do if you do this, if, what happens if this happens, and have meetings during the day and in the evenings for families that cannot attend during the day because of the work environment. We could have, that could have meetings, they're offering all, all of that free, there's no charge. I mean, we'll just start doing that on this open enrollment if the county, and we can work out, we can work out a, a program, a scheduling. The care navigation is one that is a, the third program that they're wanting, but that one does cost money. It's, care navigation is where you have, and this, I'm not sure how to, it's, it's a complex program, but it's really not. And what it amounts to is, for example, you're, you have to have a, I'm going to use an ex, an easy example, a knee surgery, you're going to have to have a knee replacement. They're proposing that we identify those cases that you can have a flat rate for a knee replacement, and there are different types of knee replacements, but each one of those cases, there are centers in the, in the country, some in Texas, some in Oklahoma, but all over, the ones are the closest to us in Oklahoma and in Texas, and where you have a bundle pricing. So when you have a knee replacement, the bundle pricing is so inexpensive, it's still expensive, but relative to what it costs to do it, it's, it's inexpensive, where you can include the cost of transportation for the patient and someone to accompany them, the cost of staying at that facility, and include the surgery and the stay on a bundle price, and you can get, you can save sometimes 60, 70% of the total cost. So that's, that is what care navigation is. So let's say that you get diagnosed, you're going to have to have a knee replacement, it's going to cost, I'm just going to throw you a number, but in the proposals, if you have the proposals, the attachments are there, okay? Say that a knee replacement's going to cost $80,000 or $70,000, and we get a bundle price for $30,000, okay? We add the cost of transportation, stay, and then a companion to go with you, and we'll save $50,000 on your knee replacement, simply not by doing it necessarily here, but by doing it in a facility that specializes on that, okay? Now, we could also do that locally if we can get bundle pricing that's competitive, that's competitive to those locations, okay? We have, we have had bundle prices before, okay? We've negotiated it, we've had them, but now this goes beyond that because we are limited to who we can negotiate with locally, but by using bundle prices from the state of Texas or possibly parts of Oklahoma, Oklahoma for some reason has a substantial number of facilities that do bundle prices at a, at a very low cost, okay? That's what care navigation is all about, and, and it really could be a significant savings. I mean, it's, you can apply this to a stance, or obviously, there's, there's some things that you have, you cannot do that because of the level of emergency, but, but you can apply it to all, all kinds of things, okay? And you have in the, let me ask, Michael, do they have a copy of the proposal?
No.
No? Okay. It's, it's, it's within the proposal itself, but it, it is considered confidential, but I think some of them, you can actually Google them and see them on their, on their websites.
Right. I mean, it's, it's pretty shocking.
It is shocking. I, I mean, it is truly.
I think, I think one of the things I'm going to just interject here in the interest of time is that I just want to just remind everybody that we had an insurance committee that was able to meet with Tomas and with Michael, and we had, Julie was also a member of the committee. Am I missing anybody? Okay, well, it, it, I'm sorry, very important, the auditor, yes, and commissioners.
Commissioner Modest.
Yes. And the, the concept here is that we wanted to make sure that our reinsurance got established in time so that nobody has a blip, right?
That's right.
And that's really what's before us today, is the opportunity to approve the insurance and the recommendation that was made by the committee based upon what we believe to be in the best interest of all of our folks that are on our health county plan. And more importantly, and, and you're doing a good job of highlighting them, and there's a couple more bells and whistles, the idea here is that I wanted more, and I really challenged Tomas to make certain, and Michael, that the RFP requested more. And the only thing that you guys really need to know is that more costs, however, there are some bells and whistles that are already included in the application, and so I don't know if that's a possibility to give to the commissioners at a later date, a listing of the bells and whistles and those that are supposedly, you know, included, but the other thing is there's going to be a need to negotiate some of them, and at that point, we allow you to do that, and then you come back to us, and we'll make what I'm going to call a second.
Right.
Why don't you just explain that to the commissioners? Because I want them to understand what we're doing right now, what they need to do, and what's going to happen in a few weeks.
Right. So, so the action that we're asking to take today is to make the award so that that can establish the start of the negotiation.
That's what I wanted to hear, okay?
Bring him back to the court, and, and when we bring that contract back, it will have stipulated out what the difference, bells and whistles that we include into the contract terms.
And they're the type of bells and whistles that I think all good self-funded insurance companies who really want to make a difference in wellness for the employees, but it's not a one-way street. It's not just good for the funder, it's awesome for the insured. And in this regard, you're going to see things, because we've made this request when it comes back to us, that will be, I think, really appreciated by the employee, and it's, it should signal a real improvement from what they have today and what they're about to get, and I'm really excited about that, but I can't share that with you now because we got to do step A before we get to B. So what you've got before you is step A, which really, I just want to make sure everyone understands that Boone Chapman is a third-party administrator who basically handles this contract for us. The, the competition, is it okay to say all the competition, Michael? The people that are qualified are what you see on your screen. The proposers that were qualified, that we analyzed, were Blue Cross Blue Shield, Health Smart, Kristus Bond Health Network, and then of course Boone Chapman, who really represents the, the national network of Aetna. Okay? I just want everyone to understand what your choices.
The real, the real choice for national network is really Aetna, and the real choice for reinsurance is Aetna reinsurance, which is a separate entity from the Aetna Signature Network. We have two choices for some of these programs that I've discussed, the enhancements. Those are choices that are either the Kristus Bond Health Network or subsidiaries or subcontracts that Boone Chapman has for providers and/or a combination thereof, okay?
And that's what you're going to bring back.
And that's what we're going to discuss and try to.
Next time. So I, I just want everyone to know that you're working on this feverishly, but you have to have authority to do that, and that's what we're getting done right now. It's really just step one.
There's one thing that I do want to share, because I don't.
Okay.
I don't want people to not know how significant it is. We did a projection of, of the navigation, care navigation. The sum of the procedures that we would have to pay for on those surgery centers is right under $1 million. The bill charges, usual prices are $3 million, and the savings would be $2 million. Just to highlight how important that we really seriously consider that, okay? It could have a major impact on our costs.
It's huge. And just to give an anecdotal, so when you, as an insured, call Boone Chapman, i.e. Aetna, to get pre-authorized, their job is just to get you authorized. With care navigation, their job will be to find you the best package deal. It is a complete departure.
I think it's an option.
And provide it to you as an option, and you get to make the decision.
The employees.
That's what makes it so great.
You waive, but the plan would waive copays, coinsurances.
Right.
The cost to the employee or dependent.
So have you already got prices from these carriers? You already have the prices already?
Yes.
Okay. I can't make an informed decision for the citizens of Corpus Christi that elected me for $2 million with this information. Maybe the rest of them can, but I'm not going to, I'll abstain before I do that. Does the county pay for the employees' insurance here?
A portion, I would, ma'am.
What portion do you know?
I've topped my head about 25% of the total premium.
This just doesn't give me anything. I mean, I understand that there was a committee that did this, but I'm not going to make a decision to spend $2 million on this information. I want to see what the plans are, I want to see the comparison, I want to see how much it went up from last year, I want to see out-of-network, I don't know what all you guys offer, I'm not on the insurance, but I know that the citizens pay for what we do here, and I want the best plan for employees, but also want the best prices. So I don't understand why we can't see what y'all are seeing. You say it's proprietary, I see that.
The purchasing policies do provide for any of the commissioners, if you want to see the, the proposal, you just ask.
I want to see that.
And you basically just sign that it's confidential.
So why don't we just include it with our package confidentially instead of us having to ask for this? This is frustrating to me because we do not get enough information up here to make some of the decisions we're making. We don't. And I've asked, I don't know how many times, to get, just like we had a report earlier, ask for the reports ahead of time with the packet so we can review them and ask informed questions. You can't when you get it this quick. I'm not being ugly, Judge, but this is frustrating to me. I've asked since I got on here last year, and we still don't have the information.
And this one, we can't post, but you can certainly get a confidential report.
And I see you can't post it, but they could give it to us knowing we're.
Confidentially.
Yes.
Commissioner, I agree with, agree with you because we go through this every year, you know, we go to the same thing every year, you know, and, and we still don't see anything that we want to see. But I think that for our employees, if, if an employee is referred, and I think this is very important, they're referred to San Antonio or Austin for a specialist, they should be covered. I mean, if a doctor's saying, you know, you got to go to this doctor because we don't have any doctors that take care of Parkinson's here, or any doctors that say, you know, that neurologists that are, I think they should be covered. I mean, I think the other thing is on these, I always prefer a local than somebody a third-party on the outside. You know, if we're talking about 10 points different or 15 points different, I don't know what the, what, what the difference is, but if it's local, maybe we can contract with them or have an agreement that they're going to bring those doctors that actually are going to accept the insurance, you know, because, I mean, a lot of employers, and I might not say it, but they go through all this.
Okay, and I just, I want to make something very clear. I want to make sure that we have the time to do it on July 31st, and I don't mind getting them everything confidentially, but let me make sure that everybody understands that there was four people that applied or were proposers, and the difference is like this, okay? It's not even, you're not going to have, I'm going to get them to you, but you're not going to have any dispute at all because it's, it's like this. There's, you're not going to have a choice.
I, I, I don't have a problem telling you.
I, I think you should just tell them how, what the difference is.
All in excess of $1 million.
It's, it's, so.
There's no compromise.
There's only two people that are even in the realm that you could make a decision between A and B, and I agree with you on local, but it's, it's not a decision at all because the difference is over $1 million.
I don't know if it will be appropriate, but I, I'd like to make a suggestion, I'd say. If it will be appropriate, but I, I'd like to make a suggestion. I said, you know, I know the confidentiality issue has always been a big issue. And even when the contracts are approved, that portion of the contract, which is confidential, is sealed and kept at the clerk's office sealed, and, and that, and that's it. I would encourage, if it's appropriate, I don't know if it's legally appropriate, that I meet with anybody who wants to in the court and sit down and go through the detailed analysis that shows you the differences and how the differences are arrived. I don't have a problem at all with that. And I think you will see the work. I've, I have approached one of the, how, how serious they are about their confidentiality to give, to illustrate it. I've approached one of them in an effort to help them get reinsurance. And I requ, I told him, I said, the only solution is that you're going to have to release this information to reinsurance carriers in order to get a quote that I can firm up and take it to the county and say, this is a firm quote. And they called me back saying, no, we're not going to do it. Well.
In other words, they themselves. Yeah. The healthcare providers themselves won't release their discounts or their information. So the reason we do it in this committee forum, because I asked the same question, is that this is the only way to protect both their information and our information. And you all entrusted the insurance committee to look at everything. And what you're looking at is a scale that identifies those parameters in the best way possible. But I think that Tomas, if, if we have the time, and that's all I really want to ask you guys, if we can do this on the 31st, because it's scheduled, then you will have time to show them what, what we in the insurance committee got to see. And that would make them feel better about the choice that we're going to make. If we don't, I need you to disclose that right now, and then I need to.
I'll, I will, I'll take the time out, but I'll stay. It's okay.
Well, I'm saying, do we, will it meet the criteria, Michael? Will we be able, because I was, there was a huge time-sensitive gap here.
So yes, we are up against, and that's what I mentioned when we first, when I first got started in my presentation. We have a open enrollment that starts August 21st and 22nd. The other thing to remind the court is the, these services were scheduled for renewal. We had done a full-blown bid out that y'all vetted heavily the last time around. And so we were on a schedule to renew. And the provider was going to be Boone Chapman. So we're not, in, in the way it played out this time, it's the same provider. So, and with, and with the pricing coming in so vastly different, there's, there's really not a decision to make.
I agree.
And they were the only provider that provided stop-loss coverage bid. So I have no other provider for you to pick from. And, and I understand the, the, the desire to have the information. And we will certainly make every effort to make sure you get that information. We're just up against some time deadlines.
We need to start earlier then. That's what we need to do, because I don't know what it is. It's happened before. We start too late. We know when the enrollment is, so we should be starting earlier. So we have plenty of time to discuss this. I'm very familiar with insurance. I just renewed it for my company. So y'all can't tell me something I don't know. So, so I know what I'm looking for. So there may only be one option to y'all, and that may be the case, but I still want to see the information. Next time, I hope we do it earlier.
We can wait till July 31st. I'm sorry. Can we wait till July 31st?
Yes. Since you want to see it, just get together with Michael, or Michael, get together with you and provide you that, and you just sign up on the confidential.
Yeah.
But we all know we want to see it. So next time, I hope we can get it ahead of time. I'm not trying to be ugly, guys, but this is frustrating. We're talking about a lot of money.
But the, the most important thing that we need to do is calendar, because it has to come to the insurance. Like, for example, I couldn't even see it until the insurance committee met. So it gets, it gets tricky, and really what's frustrating is the law. The law is frustrating because it's not seamless. Open Meetings Act doesn't allow us to all get in there together, which is really what the easiest thing would be. So.
That's why y'all create a selection committee, and that's why these proposals specify, and I can only take two members of Commissioners Court.
Right.
On these proposal committees. And, and y'all have to pick the right folks to represent you in those meetings. And then we need to do our part to bring back the information so that y'all can make an informed decision.
I'm going to make my own decision. I appreciate the committee, but I want to see the information.
And, and the, the good thing is, is that once we do jump over the July 31st hurdle, Tomas, you need to work fast and furious, because we've got to be able to negotiate. When's the next court after that?
August 7th.
Okay. On August 7th, we have to be able to present to court the bells and whistles.
Yeah, which is why we were hoping to get the award.
I know. I know. Well.
You can do the award, Judge. I'm just going to abstain. If y'all vote for it, I'm just going to abstain.
Yeah.
Because we're not entering into a contract today. Just know that.
Right. You know, that's the good point.
All this is, is enabling us to continue down the path and be able to.
Right.
Real numbers for you to see. I think when I, in fact, when I watched that video last time, it was, it was kind of funny. We were, I don't know if we're putting the cart in front of the horse, but we, we were discussing matters that we didn't have full information on, decided figures to say what exactly is the impact to the county. And we're not going to get to that point until we get into the negotiation phase.
Okay. So in that case, with that parameter, I will go ahead and entertain a motion, not for the contract award, but for the opportunity to go negotiate for that final contract. It's, it's a renewal to allow us to negotiate. Is that the proper wording?
You can say award, award.
I can.
Boone Chapman now.
Okay. Under the.
And then condition it that they negotiate.
And bring back a final contract. And in the meantime, you're going to provide all the information. Because really, when we vote for the final contract is when all commissioners.
Right.
Will get the final say-so.
That's when, when you actually know the numbers, the, the final numbers.
Yeah. So the, the language that I was given was that we would recommend award to Boone Chapman and to bring back the contract subject to negotiations.
Okay.
I want to know specifically if our employees have to pay a second bill or not when you come back, because they do. I'm not voting for it.
Okay, but let's do the, let's do the motion. We've got a motion and a second, and then I'm going to take, that was the discussion, and then all those in favors.
Real, real quick discussion. I'm sorry, Judge.
Go ahead.
Trying to wait for an opening here. And so my experience before being on this committee, I was the chair of the Insurance Committee with CCISD. And so things are done a little differently. So as far as numbers, we're giving those numbers, because I agree. That's been my frustration, the three years I've been dealing with, with these. And it's, you know, of course, we're told we can always go, and it's not practical to go and get that information. But that's kind of on us, it's on us. But for me, you know, we need a good summary of numbers, and they don't have to be the exact dollar amount, but a good general sense of what the numbers are. And I think that really we need to also look at for future, our future plan, and we need to start like once this one's approved, is we need to get back on the next plan and say, how can we give different levels of healthcare? You look at, at, at CCISD, you look at the city, there's, there's different levels that can be cho, chosen from. You know, there's, there's always like the regular plan, kind of the Cadillac plan, if you're willing to pay more for it. So give them options. And then also, depending on your age, you could be penalized for your age, depending on how the plan works or the services you get. Then I always hit on, you know, we, we, we're limited in the pharmacies that we have. And I know and I hope that that goes into negotiations. Tomas has heard it before. When we take out Walgreens, I have no stake in them at all. But when you take out one of the biggest pharmacies in the country out of our plan, I just don't see that, how, how that, that I think hurts on convenience, I think. And, and I just think that that's something that needs to be included. So. Those are kind of the comments I wanted to share, not really directly related to the motion, but at least while we're talking, I wanted that to kind of be expressed, because I think that's important. And, and also we need to entertain the idea of going out for, propose for a consultant. Nothing against Tomas, but we, I think that being able to ask for a new consultant is healthy for any plan, any kind of consultation that you have, or you have a contract done, that we should have that also explored. And it may turn out that Tomas gets it again. But I think that we owe it to the, the taxpayers and, and to those that we represent to have an opportunity for that. So those are part of, part of the things that I'm asking.
Tomas has a contract and it's not up yet. So when that comes up, then that would be the appropriate time, and that would be an RFP process. However, I want to just triple-check with everybody so that we can put a bow on this. The law only gives us certain parameters to work with here. And the reason is, is because it is, you cannot give you the numbers in an unsafe setting, because there is competition. We also do not want, if you remember, whatever you own here, it's discoverable. Tim left, but he's probably listening to me, okay? That means anything you have, right there, he can ask for it and get it. And so we can't do it in this environment. It just, I don't feel like there's any way, that's why it's done in this, what seems like a back room, but it is not. It, it's to protect the competition. Spawn, Krista Spahn Network, Health Smart, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and Boone Chapman, if they knew each other's numbers this time, it would not be an appropriate setting, because they could use those numbers. And then your question is really a healthcare marketing question. And no, none of these are going to give you what you want. I just want you to know that. It's frustrating for all of us, but it's a healthcare. It, our argument is not, is with the law, again, with the legislation, the way they are not creating a forum for private emergency rooms to be a part of these healthcare network plans. They're all out of network. That's how they make so much money. Having said that, what I really want us to emphasize is that there's the mechanism that we're going to provide. You're going to help me by making sure that all the commissioners that were not on the committee have the opportunity to meet with you, sign the confidentiality agreement, and then we'll go forward with that. I think that's going to be the best. But I want to emphasize, I don't want to see anything up here at all. No numbers, no tables, no nothing, because it would be a terrible violation, and we would get into some serious trouble. And so I want to be real clear. But I think you get it, that this is like the most important thing we do, is the healthcare of our employees. And, but you, if you'll give them the chance to negotiate, you're going to see the bells and whistles that maybe they're not age-determinative. I think that's probably a discrimination. But I think cessation of smoking, for example, those types of things, you could certainly offer plans if you're a smoker versus a non-smoker. We've also seen, the, the plan that we need to offer has got to be good for everybody. And it needs to be equal and uniform for everybody. And those are the best healthcare plans. And, and so let him, give him a chance to bring back what the bells and whistles are. And I think you'll get a chance to see that these are the decisions you really want to make.
Depending on what changes are made, we may have to have a planned document amendments to implement those changes under group health plan.
Correct.
And so we may, in tandem with this, as we go through it, I will try to get planned document amendments, changes in the draft form to implement whatever it is that we're recommending. But, but I don't know how the timeline would be, but in order to implement it October 1, the plan amendments will also have to be approved, okay?
Okay. I'm going to let you work.
But, but we need to.
Well, I'll let you guys work together to get the right calendar. But anyway, so we have a motion. We have a second.
Tomas, one quick.
Go ahead.
So you mean to tell me the employees have one plan, that's it. They have no options to choose from. Whatever we give them, that's what they have to take.
Currently, that's correct. We have had.
Wow.
We have had other plans before. And, but yes, anything can be done.
But, but let me just say this. It's, it's, I'm going to clarify. Your options are employee, employee with spouse, employee with children. It, it's not just one thing for everybody. You get the choice of, of how you choose your.
But they don't have any option for different plans, is what I'm asking you, on what you offer.
No. And, and that's because we ourselves are the self-funder. We, but having said that.
But, but before you go out there and change it, there are reasons why you should or wishes why you shouldn't, and it's something that ought to be discussed before you do it.
I agree. I just would like to see people have choices.
And that's why the bells and whistles from telemedicine to care navigation to flu shots, to all of the things that are things that I want for my family, I want them for, for the county's family. And so that's what, for the first time, we've never done this before, at least in a long, if it's done, you hadn't been done in a decade. So we're doing things that, that are going to improve these plans.
And you know, there's, look, your self-funded plan, you can change the plan. If you want to have three plans, you can have three plans. But, but you need to understand that there are imp, financial implications to doing all of that. And given that, then that's fine. And then you make a decision, and then we go out for three plans if you want to.
And I understand the financial part of it, but usually what happens is you offer option one. And if they want option two or three, they can pay the difference. I'm just saying, they should get a choice.
You know?
That's.
My opinion.
That, that is the choice for the employer when you're in a self-funded.
Yeah.
Okay. Obviously, look, not strange, healthcare is the most important issue across this country. It's not strange that it was an important issue today. I'm sorry that it was at the end of the meeting. But, you know, it just, I think it's also important that you meet with everybody. Because you can see that we need to get as much information out as possible. Okay, I'm going to let Tyner work on all that great new calend, calendaring of things. And I'm going to ask that we take a vote on the motion and the second that was pending. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays or abstentions? Abstain from Ms. Vaughn. Okay. And then, let's see. I got to make sure. That was it for you, Michael?
Well, I'm going to need the same.
For the stop.
For the stop loss.
Stop loss. Okay. Stop loss, I'll need a motion. And I've got a motion, a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. I just want to remind that the stop loss, there is only one.
I'll remind y'all, there's only one proposer.
One proposer on that one. And so there's no, there's only one choice. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain. Three and four. Is there anything else, Michael, for us?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then Dale, you have a budget change order. And I'm going to switch my notebooks now so I can look at it again. I believe it's $10,000.
Yes, Judge. Budget change order number 18 for your consideration, where there are only a small number of changes on, on the particular balances. Commissioner Modas needs a little bit more for travel expenses that he had to have done. He has money to move from, his lot of supplies for that particular issue. On building superintendent, they had a, a, a repair that needed to be done. It was an emergency repair, and it had been done at night, so additional overtime was, was, was needed for that particular purposes. On page two, you'll see our airports requiring a little bit of a change for their maintenance repair of grounds. This is the contract they have for mowing services for the facility of the balances. The funds are available for these transfers, and I submit this for your approval.
I'm sorry, it's, I know the funds are there, but it's the mowing, did you say? Mowing. Yeah, mowing services. And this was not budgeted, or do you think we're just not estimating it correctly? What, what's going on there?
The new contract, new service came up, and then the rates came, came in very high. Before, we were having assistance from other departments that were doing it, because of the timing and, and need for it, we had to contract us out.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'm going to ask for a motion a second. I'm also going to ask that we reach out to John and find new ways to improve mowing, maybe.
That's where overtime comes from, overtime?
Uh, no, it was just a new contract for the mowing. Oh, which one are you looking at?
I'm looking at 1570.
They didn't read the contract.
They had to repair a, a facility that was, that had damage at night. So they had to come in on an emergency situation to make sure the repair was done. So they required overtime for, for them to come, take care of the services at night.
Okay.
Do we know what building that was?
Um, no, I do not know.
Okay. Might be good if, I know maybe Juan's listening. If you don't mind, just send me a little email so I know which building that was. And, and like I said, I'm going to address by email Commissioners with John, and maybe Commissioner Modas will help me, because there's got to be a better solution, because that's going to be a, a departure from the budget of a significant amount.
What was that, what was that amount?
That's the $10,000 for the mowing.
For the mowing services contract.
Where's that at?
Did they not read their contract, Dale?
I, 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 I just saw, something came up, and, and I, I don't know how it got changed, but it got to where, when we bid the South, this is the lowest bid.
Commissioner Jag will do it for a lot cheaper. He says he'll get on his tractor. Okay. I think.
Make a motion.
Yeah, make a motion. And all those.
Discussion. I, I just, and I'll make sure that next time my request, the backup.
Thank you.
I, I just, and I'll make sure that next time my request, the backup justifies a little bit better on my part. It's not just a budget transfer to cover travel expenses, it's, we're signing up for conferences that are actually going to be toward the tail end or the new fiscal year, and so that's why it looks like I'm asking for more, and because on the off years, especially since I did some traveling to Austin, there was more use of the travel compared to last year. I didn't use hardly any of my travel expenses. So that's, I just kind of want to be on record that that's why, is because of this cost towards the end of fiscal year, or the new count, new fiscal year.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm, well, I think all of us are the same boat noted. Thank you for the, the clarification. And, and then I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If hearing none, all those signify by saying aye, aye, pose same sign, and then you have one more item.
Monthly report for, for May of, of 2019, I'll, I'll try to be quick, but not too quick to, because I know the time it is, so on page four is where we show our, our assets, liabilities, and, and fund equity for all of our funds. This is, is May, so we're, we're seven, eight months in, we've got four months left, so the, you see our fund balances, $47 million, it's, but, that, that is right where we probably expect it to be for the time period, and same thing for the other funds. You'll see the analysis on page eight and nine, you'll see where our fund bounce trends are, so you see we're right in, by where we should be on our, our trend analysis for, for those particular funds. We always like to tell you about our health insurance, our health insurance is on page 10. Our group health insurance right now for the, the column that says group health, our fund balance is $1,236,000. For this particular month, our expenses were a little bit higher than our, our revenue, but not a significant amount. You'll see that on the next, next two pages, on page 12, you'll see where our, our history for our, actually, our expenses were below our revenue, so that's, that was a good point, but it was not a, a significant amount below, but we need to keep an eye on this, because you saw in January and in, in March, we had some significant bumps in our, our balances. We knew it had some large claims, so we need to keep an eye on that, and some of this that we're talking about, our, our insurance will be something we need to make sure we address and, and look into it for our budget process, and right now, we don't foresee any requirements for an increase in premium, but we'll keep an eye on, on the, on transactions and how it flows. On our budget items for our, our expenses are going to be starting on page 22 and 23, to show you the, the numbers where we have some, some little bit of problems, not necessarily problems, but where they're slightly over our budget as of this particular time this year, and we start on page 23. Unfortunately, Judge, your budget is a little bit over budget.
That's it.
On, on, it's, it's not too much, but, but we just need to keep, work with, with yourself and, and, and my staff, and we'll get everything squared away. The next item is going to be on page 31.
Can I ask you something?
Certainly.
I'm just curious, I'm looking at all the charges, why do all of us, the judge and all of us, have other services and charges, and Commissioner Precinct Four doesn't? Am I overlooking that?
I'll have to look into where the other services and charges are.
We sure want to charge him, if we charge anybody, man, this is ridiculous.
Well, and, and, and I just want to know, I mean, we're living off somebody else's budget, so for example, in my case, I mean, you've got, you had no money for travel, I mean, and then we literally had a legislative session, so I think a lot of it is, is a little, I mean, but I think we should probably do a budget trans, a budget change order there.
Last time when we, when we have some other services, and they, they, other services are a la, large category, covers a lot of different transactions, but we'll make sure why Precinct Four doesn't show anything, but we'll make sure there's, if there's expenses there, we will report it. The.
Like, for example, telephone and utilities, Judge Neil had no cellular phone. And I mean, so I just want to, for whoever is listening, it's not like, I mean, we're, we're modernizing the office, and with that comes expense.
And she traveled a lot.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, she had to, because Judge Neil had a flip phone, and we had to bring in the stuff, like you said, he had no, he had no this, he had no this.
I'm sorry, Judge Neil, we love you, but you were a dinosaur when it came to cellphones.
On page 31, we see our, our Department 1465, our ware, our warehouse, again, it's the utility cost for, for that, it's a little bit higher, but it's not too far off of the, we, where the balances should be. On page 33, the Bishop Building is showing a little bit of a increase on the utilities as well, on, on some costs there, where, and my staff is keeping an eye on that to make sure there's no abnormal balances that are being charged there, since we've had some, some experience with other buildings charging significantly more, but we keep an eye on, on those particular issues as well. On page 38, again, because we had to pay the rent for the facility, for, for legal aid all at once, it's, it's showing over budget, so we, but we still need to report that that is currently the issue at, at the, at the same time. And on page 39, you'll see that our magistrate court is at 32.6%, which is below the threshold as well. There's a lot of issues that we're getting to, and, and as Merrily was saying, some other issues that we're talking about for going through the magistrate court to make sure that their balances are where they should be. On page 41, there's, there's two of them, the 94th District Court and 105th District Court, and on the next page, on the very top, you'll see the 117th District Court, 3340. And on page 43, you'll see the 214th as well, as, as being over budget now. Every one of these courts has had multiple capital trial cases in, in their courts, and capital trials are very expensive. Sometime of our, our, our court point attorney fees are $20,000 or more per case, so it's, if it's, if we have capital murder cases in these, then they, they will be where they are, but we're keeping, work with the judges to try to work the, the numbers out. The next one I will show you is on page 52, and that would be our sheriff's office. And he's, the, and, and where the main course is, is down here, where you see other services and charges as well, that's where we have a lot of the materials that we have to buy for, the inmates, the clothes, the linens, all the, the supplies we have to buy for them, and because our jail has been at, well, this is the sheriff's office, excuse me, the, the same thing for, for the sheriff's office, where this is where their legal, law enforcement equipment is, and this is also where, if they've had some vacancies and they've had additional training for these officers to get them certified, that's where the expense is at, so that's kind of where they're, where they're causing the problem. But the same issues on page 53 on the jail, they're at 32%. And the biggest one for that, you'll see, is the food and kitchen supply, because the, our population in our jail, as, as high as it's been, our, our expenses are, are significantly higher than where they, where they are.
What's the, what's the expense for, I mean, you said?
For which one?
Food and supply?
The, the one for the jail is for the, the feeding the inmates. And that's a $1.5 million cost we had for feeding the inmates for, for that.
Are they using some of their budget that they have also?
Not for feeding the inmates, no.
They can do that for inmates, I mean.
Well, they do some, some of the other supplies down below where they, they, they're bedding and their linens, and they do have the, they go outside vendor for some of their cleaning supplies, because they, they think their other cleaning supplies can work better, and we want to make sure we don't violate any of our contractual issues, so they do use their inmate benefit funds for those particular costs, and those are not shown here, but what's shown here is what they've actually spent from the general fund, and most of it is for our.
They got $1 million, so they do some of it.
And they, they, they do some, but, but yes, they could probably do more, yes. Okay, let's see. I believe that's the last, I saw for, for the general fund, however, the general fund is doing 41.3%, so you'll see on page 61, and you'll see that we're doing, overall, that's very, very good for the entire county is for the general fund, even though there are some that are, are, are in a, in a position where they could be, but that's something to do. Now, a matter that we, we talked about earlier today, and another issue with Estrada, and also they talked about bond issues that we have, that we have remaining funds, if you look on page 81, on page 81 shows you our different certificate obligation issues that we have, and the ones that's of main concern is your 2004 and your 2007, and we don't have very much left of those particular funds, but we do have some, and most of the funds in 2004 are, under the commissioner's authority for mainly, it was for drainage and other issues that we have. So I know there's a plan with some other issues that we need to work with, and I know some of these funds have been encumbered already, but we need to make sure that some of these items that for at least 2004, 2007, try to get expended are encumbered as quickly as possible.
And, and I just want to point out, I want to somehow put a alarm or flag or something, I don't think it's going to happen anymore, but it would be nice to have like a, a watch on some, you know, I mean, I don't think it's going to be a problem doing these expenditures, because the commissioners are willing to work together and come up with a good project, but I just think it's a good idea to have a flag, because we got lucky, in the sense that we were just asking and inquiring and looking, and then all of a sudden, it revealed the CO4, you know, 2004. So I don't know where we're deficient on our programming, but I'm talking about software now.
That's what, that's what.
Can you help, maybe?
Our budgets, our budget requests, I'm putting, proposing a budget request, when we, when we get to that cycle, of bringing in a software that has a CIP function to it, where we can do some capital improvements as well as project tracking in that particular item, it is $100,000 a year, but it also includes a budget package that will, will help with our, with our budget cycle we're doing now, because right now, my staff and I spend a lot of time in Excel and Word and, and other software to try to prepare the budget for this office and, 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 and the court, so that particular issue will be a, a good issue that we can bring forward, and we'll, it's.
It'll be able to address that particular issue.
Yes.
Because other than that, our only remedy is to say, hey Dale, issue monthly reports or quarterly or whatever, so that we can be monitoring, you know, these, these expenditures.
And we try to do this on, on, on a, a monthly basis, to try to say, this is what's left and to, to be funded, and, because we know with what, what Estrada was saying, that, and Knowie was saying, that these are requirements that, that IRS is going to start looking very closely at.
There's no doubt.
Require some of this stuff to be expended as quickly as possible, and then, now, if, as long as we, as long as they're encumbered, and these are encumbered, but we still need to get them spent.
Even 2015 is coming up pretty soon, too.
Yes. And there's some larger numbers in the 2015 series and the 2016 that we have a lot of pending value, or the 2016 and the 17 have a lot of ADA stuff in it that we need to work with the numbers for. If you go to page 85, you'll see that for the month of May, our transactions for our P card was $320,988, and the number one expenses has changed slightly, it was equipment and vehicles, now it's buildings and grounds, but still maintenance repair, so we need to try to work with the capital improvements, try to get some of these buildings and vehicles as well, with, with the lease of the vehicles possibly, to try to reduce some of those costs, and that's something we definitely need to work through. And the last page of the, of the report shows you for the total reports of our P cards, we have spent $2,717,717 for our P cards, and these, these reports show you how we spent them and who we spent them, and our, our number one vendors through the list. That's the monthly financial report for May 31st, 2019, Judge.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Let me say just one thing, I really am impressed with the reporting on time, that's been one of the best reports we've had.
Yes.
Especially the JP's, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, this is really good, I mean, I really.
It's gotten where we now have, with the Odyssey improvements, we've gotten in, it's, sped up some reports, and my staff can go on the, in the, in the Odyssey reports and, and kind of already have some information available to us, so the, have kind of changed slightly, but there, there's definitely some improvements. There still needs to be a little bit of improvements with Odyssey, but we're working with IT on that.
You got even nibbled in there, man.
Yes.
Well, do I have a motion to move approval, please? And I need a second. And hearing a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, approving this month's financial report, aye. Okay, at this time.
Before you go into executive session, there's an item, item C, which is a grievance by Armin Lopez.
Yes.
It is a personal matter, it is an executive session, but according to the personnel rules and civil service rules, the employee has a right to request that it be an open session, and he has requested that it be open.
Okay, so are we going to move to that at this moment?
Yes, you can do it now.
Okay.
And of course, this is a meeting, so you still follow that process.
Okay, and am I going to read the executive session, and, or we're not in executive session?
No.
Okay, so we're not going to do that at all? Okay, in that case, I'm going to move for discussion on item 5C, grievance 062019-1, Armin Lopez versus All Noises County Justices of the Peace, and then it's listing all of the JP's, and Loudest, you would take the lead on this.
Yes, the employee falls under the personnel rules and his direct supervisor resolved the JP's. The JP's met and basically terminated the employee. He was given notice of the, the actual reasons for the termination, and under the rules, and under the personnel policies, he's entitled to respond to that. He can either do it orally or in writing, and under the rules, the, the actual grievance comes to you, and that's where we're at. Julie is here, and basically she can talk a little bit more, and of course, I, I, I think Mr. Lopez is here, so he may want to address the court. It's not a hearing, it's basically a meeting, he's, he's, he can be allowed to present his response to the actual terminator, termination notice.
But today's purpose is to address the grievance today, or?
Today.
Okay, so. Okay, so Julie's going to come and present?
Yes.
Okay. Is he represented by an attorney, does the attorney present?
He is represented by Mr. Hale, and I believe he addressed the court on public comments earlier.
As, as Mrs. Minnis said, his, he was terminated by the JP, all the JP's, because he was shared by all the JP's, so he would report to all of them.
Why don't you just remind us the title, his, his job title?
He was a case manager, juvenile case manager.
Thank you.
And so he was given a contemplated letter of discipline, and he was allowed to respond, which he did, and then he was finally terminated by, of course, the JP's, and then at that point, he came to our office and picked up a grievance packet. So yes, the grievance packet has been completed, and it was submitted back to our office by him, and so from there, because he falls under the personnel rules, it's, it's given to the commissioner's court to decide how it needs to be handled, because he does not fall under civil service. There's a select few positions throughout the county that do not fall under civil service, and including certain departments in their entirety, such as the DA's office, the district clerk's office, all the JP staff members, they do not fall under civil service. So therefore, they would follow the personnel rules, and the commissioner's court pretty much decides on how personnel rules need to be handled and managed. So in this case, he is grieving the JP offices, so therefore, it would be up to the commissioner's court to decide how y'all need to proceed with it.
And what are our options?
The options have been in the past to allow the elected officials to handle their own employees, and so therefore, it, in the past, what I have seen is that it is given back to the department to make the decision, the final decision on as to how that grievance should be handled. And I believe that's also at the suggestion of the county attorney's office.
That's our recommendation, to go back.
You'll go back and have a hearing with the JP's?
Yes.
That's correct.
That's correct.
It won't necessarily be a hearing, but they would all, they, it would go back to the JP's, and they would decide how they want to proceed with the grievance.
And then if they proceeded, they would make a decision, and that decision would be a final decision?
That's correct.
And what are his options at that point?
Lawsuit.
A lawsuit.
Okay, I'm trying to make sure that we, I understand the process, process, since we have not done this type of issue before.
It usually doesn't happen often, I.
And, and so I want to know, you know, what the, okay. And is it, do you have some sort of evidence that, like in the scope of work, where it states he's not civil service, so that, in other words, there's track one, civil service, track two, non-civil service, is that correct?
Correct.
And so do we have something that we can look at so that we can ascertain that he's not civil service?
I have a document in human resources that states which positions.
Are civil service and which ones aren't?
Majority, actually, it says which ones are excluded.
Which ones are excluded?
There's fewer positions.
And his title is in that exclusion?
It would. It would fall under all positions under JP.
Got it. Okay, I just, I want to make sure because track one goes this way and track two goes this way. So we can now at least feel comfortable that there is language that you can show that his particular title is in the exclusionary piece of the civil service.
It would fall under all employees that are employed by JP's are excluded.
Got it.
That's how it's, that's how it's titled.
Okay, now I understand. All right, and so at this point, Lourdes, can, what would you like?
Yeah, basically the recommendation is that it be referred back to the elected official. I know it's an agenda item and I don't know if he signed up for it and he'd like to address the court. But the bottom line is our recommendation goes back to, to them for final disposition.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to call for the opportunity to address the court. I just need you to sign up. Does he need to sign? No, it's, since it's an agenda item, an executive session, does he need to sign? No?
He wanted it in an open session, so.
Okay. No, you don't need to sign up then. Welcome. Hello?
Hi, my name is Armin Lopez and I'm the JP juvenile case manager, ex JP juvenile case manager. Now, my attorney said that I'm not to make a statement because he wants to defend me.
Right, that's why I asked if, if he was here.
But I'd like you to witness or observe this paper.
Okay.
I guess it's a document.
Do you have one for all of us? It's okay. I'll, I'll, I'll get it made.
After, after my probationary period, I guess I signed that.
I'm so sorry?
After, I guess after my six months probationary period, that was provided to me by HR.
Okay, thank you. Could you please make one for Julie as well and for Lourdes? Okay, I think what he's pointing to and that I would like to address is that the document reflects that he's civil service included. Is that an error?
Yes, that's an error. There's a separate document that basically shows that that position is excluded. And we have provided that to the opposing attorney.
Okay, you can see why he's confused.
Those documents are generated initially from the departments themselves.
I see.
By clerks or the department head. And so in that case, it may have been documented incorrectly and it was not changed once we received it in human resources or in payroll. But the final document that we go by is that one specific document that I'm talking about that we have in HR that defines which positions are included and excluded.
Okay. Do you think that was made available to his, him, him, or his attorney?
We provided it to him.
Just recently?
Yes.
On several instances, that box is not even checked on several employees because we already know how they're distinguished in our system.
And, and let's assume hypothetically for a moment that it's resolved that he's not civil service. Do you have an advisory for us or something that would give us an opportunity to understand that, for example, it's my understanding of the law that I cannot interfere with an elected official's management of his or her employees?
That's correct.
But I think it might be helpful for the court if you could cite that or if you could provide that information. But that is, that is my understanding.
I don't have that before me, but basically it is, it, it, obviously you cannot usurp the power that is granted to you by the constitution, the state statutes. They are the, they work at their pleasure. So they're the ones that decide anything with regards to their employees. And that's the, the bottom line as to why we're saying you, we recommend that it go back to them because they're the elected officials and they're the ones that handle their employees.
And then if there were to be a controversy about civil service, that would be decided by a court of law?
Correct.
And if there, if, again hypothetically, if that court of law decided he was civil service, then his ability to redress his grievances through the Department of Labor first?
He has a, an actual EOC complaint of which we were not aware at the time of the termination. So that is still.
He has a, a previous, in other words, prior to termination, there was an EEOC filed?
But we had no notice of it. And then the termination was, was granted.
Okay, service was not given?
So there's a, there's an agency that is looking at it.
Okay, is that typical? Shouldn't we be served with that or?
And we did, but later.
Oh, it just came in later? Okay.
We were not aware of it.
As for me, I don't think we should even be discussing it because it'd be used against us. I think we should just give it back to the JP court. So.
I'll have to make a motion that we just refer this case back to the justice of the peace.
Second. Okay.
Let them handle it in, to their, to their procedures.
So I have a motion and a second to bring it back to the justice of the peace, who are the elected official? I, I guess they have a collective board where they will meet. And is there any further discussion? I just want to say that there, that, that obviously everyone has the right to, you know, pursue all remedies that are afforded to you under the law and that that's something that this court recognizes that might occur and that we do so deliberately. So anyway, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, opposed, same sign. Okay, so this case will go back to the JP's and, and then we will, I guess, get an update from Lourdes. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, now I'm going to give public notice that the commissioner's court can elect to go into executive session at any time. And we do so at this time. It's authorized by the Open Meetings Act, chapter five, five, one of the Texas government code. We are publicly announcing that we will do so pursuant to Vernon's Texas codes, five, five, one, oh, seven, one, oh, seven, two, oh, seven, three, oh, seven, four, oh, seven, four, five, seven, six, eight, six, eight, seven. And the commissioner's court will hold an executive session to consult with an attorney, including matters related to litigation, real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices and/or economic development negotiations. And upon completion, we will come back into open session and take such actions as are appropriately on items discussed in executive session. And I am gaveling this out at one forty-four PM. We will be back. It's two seventeen PM and we're out of executive session. And I'd like to address the, we already addressed C in open session as it's listed on the agenda. But as to A, we've directed the county attorney to continue negotiations. And do we need to vote on that? I'll take, I'll take a motion to table A and I need a second. This is a motion to table. And all those in favor, if there's no further discussion, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. And then on B, we also have a motion to table at this time. And I'll take a motion for that. A motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, great. And now I'll ask if there's any adjournments in memory of, and I'll ask Commissioner Vaughn first. And John, Commissioner Modis, Commissioner Gonzalez. I'm happy too that I don't have any adjournments in memory of. It seems like we've lost so many incredible people. But I know that all throughout Nueses County, people have lost loved ones. So I would just like to adjourn in memory of all those citizens that are mourning or grieving today and for the last few weeks until we meet again. We ask for the thoughts and prayers and, and they, may they be kept with the memory of their loved ones. And with that, I will take an adjournment and we will motion for adjournment. I know it's really non-debatable, so there we go. Two nineteen PM. Two nineteen, two nineteen PM.